Just give me the cue when we're ready, Devon.
I think that's Calvin.
That was Calvin.
And the fire chief's truck.
I'll let you guys fight that out.
All right. Before anybody starts fighting, I will call this meeting to order. On what date are we? We are on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Still in vacation mode. All right. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? The one thing I would say is, I looked at my email. I did not see the minutes from the May twenty-fourth meeting, which would have been the last one we had. Did you guys? I'm not sure those are.
I never remember seeing.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that off the consent agenda. We'll just get them next time. Okay. Any, anything else? Nope. Okay. We, uh, let's move next is reports. So it looks like the fire chief is listed first tonight.
Same seats, Calvin. Try to be brief, not disturb this.
Yeah, right.
Uh, the chair just sent out an email about the track across Maine. Those riders will be in town this Friday, right after the morning commute. Uh, my numbers were eight hundred to a thousand. Your numbers were possibly two thousand.
Yeah, that's probably the old days of the track, pre-COVID, but yeah, it'd be a lot.
Somewhere, somewhere in there. Um, that'll be between the fire station and the Eureka. Uh, everything was, uh, up to a year ago signed and sort of memorandum of understanding of, of use of the town land. Uh, put on extra staff. They should be all inclusive. They have EMTs that ride with them, their own porta potties, their own mechanics, their own rest area, their own food, their own trash disposal. Shouldn't be a burden to the town, but we're prepared for it all. And I will put a posting probably tomorrow or Thursday afternoon. For the fire department, tag it to All Things Durham as a reminder that those bikes will be in town. Uh, so we should be set with that. Our Thursday night training coming up is EMS training. We will be doing active shooter hostile event training due to the recent activities in the country. Uh, part of that is also mass casualty. So triage, treatment, transport, that type of stuff. If we get EMS credits, the following Thursday fire training, uh, we'll be doing a walk through of the school. Already been in contact with the principal. Uh, we had a fire alarm there recently, so we need to familiarize the rest of the department with some, some nuances of that building.
Is there a regional, uh, like effort like that? Like, for instance, is there a coordination with the Andersgoggin County Sheriff, you know, and you, if something like that should happen?
That's a great question. So there's actually a, a fire department NFPA standard on it, three thousand best practices across the country. And it is external stakeholders. It's the town. It's really how to prepare for, respond to, and recover from an event like that.
Yeah, yeah.
We will not be training with them. Um, and I'm not even sure they're gonna be the lead. So there's, uh, state police, county, local.
Oh, right. Good point. Yeah.
Very difficult in this town. Uh, we would go to unified command where myself or one of the other command, uh, officers would be there. We would just be doing EMS. Thursday night is really getting creative about MCI as a refresher and just multiple patients.
Yeah.
Whether it's, they call it hostile event or active shooting. And there's more than the target hazard of the school in town. Several churches, the get and go, the AMVets, that type of stuff.
Sure. Yeah.
Have been identified. I, I won't go into our direct policies and procedures.
Sure.
Um, but we are preparing for it and then I, I think re, uh, soon we'll bring you all into it as the stakeholders for the town. Just so we're all on the same page, answer questions, that type of thing.
So basically, your report tonight is to let the public as well as the policymakers know that the events of recent months are cause for our training. Not that we anticipate having to use the skills, but we don't want to get caught without having those skills.
All correct. Thank you for the update. And when you talk about MCI, a mass casualty event, bicyclists in town, you, you know, it just takes one vehicle or an accident. That would tax our system. So that would be a mass casualty regardless of, of hostile events in town. So it's always a good refresher.
Great. Thank you.
Um, our call volume is up. Yesterday we did four. We've been doing double hits, but we've been taking them all, one at a time. We haven't had mutual aid. We sent one to Lisbon the other day. We've done station coverage to Lisbon twice for their fires, uh, but we're holding our, um, and that's just a tribute to the men and women across the street. Uh, as your health agent, I have been, we talked about the, uh, bird flu sort of recently. That's sort of gone away. I just got an update on, um, influenza. Which is down and believe it or not, I've been watching and getting updates on monkeypox in case any citizen is, is concerned about it, but we do have information about that. Not really, uh, a, a spreadable event. You have to have close contact with fluids. Um, has nothing to do with COVID.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if somebody is interested, I do have that. Um, I did, I know we have voting today on the AMVets. I did do a complete thorough inspection the other day before that. I, I know I see they're on their agenda for some other things, uh, minor, um, housekeeping that they're gonna handle. Very receptive, very, uh, nice to work with them.
Yep.
Uh, and the last is, we did have two of our recruits, Nick Weber and Noah Larrabee graduate from firefighter one-two. So we have two new firefighters certi- certified.
Great.
Uh, and we'll be marching them in front of you when they get their, um, certifications.
Great.
Other than that, any questions for the fire? Super.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Calvin.
This stuff's not mine, I hope. All right. So I emailed these report to you. Did you get all the attachments?
I believe they all have both energy, swamp road.
Yeah.
And part of the energy will be the discussions of the HVAC system here and over at, uh, fire department.
AC's not working on this side.
Oh, Jesus, very comfortable.
It always did, huh?
So it gets to be about a hundred and ten.
I thought it was the other side. I thought the AC was working fine. It was the heat that was problem. Okay. So, um, we've been ditching up on the Auburn Panel Road. We've been getting dump sites right next to where we've been ditching, so saving fuel. That's been a big help in this market, so. There's stream crossings. We got, uh, the Army Corps permits, uh, and the, uh, design had to change due to the Army Corps criteria. Uh, because they've classified the streams as of last year as Atlantic salmon habitat. Uh, so this is gonna require the, uh, to be changed to an open bottom concrete culvert. Rather than a, uh, uh, with, with abutments rather than, uh, the metal framed culverts that we were looking at. Uh, there's a, there's some correspondence from the engineer related to that dated May twenty-third. Wants to read that, uh, where he talks about, uh, the engineers talking about, uh, the permitting, uh, what triggered the permitting, um, to throw the Quaker Meeting House really into a bridge because to get.
Where on Quaker Meeting House Road are we talking about?
That's, uh, as you turn off from one thirty-six, it'll be the first stream crossing right over that first hill. Starting down, there's a big, uh, zafia hydrant, a, a dry hydrant there and a big fishing hole on the left right before, uh.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yeah.
That's on the Quaker Meeting House side?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, we had to go back out for the Army Corps back this spring when there was still ice on the water and, uh, get shots all along the bottom. They, they, they really have changed the permitting process and criteria, made it much more complex. Unlike the other ones we had put in, uh, with the same design criteria and we rejected it, changed it all. Uh, so the, uh, they, they now want twenty percent. Or they, they, there's some number of capacity over the water line that they want twenty percent, uh, open space for floating debris and which raises the height, which raises then the width. And so, and once they hit twenty feet, they become a bridge. So Quaker Meeting House Crossing effectively becomes a bridge because it hits twenty feet. Uh, the one on Swamp Road, we were able to keep that at eighteen and a half feet, raising the height. We still were able to stay under the twenty feet to keep us in the, um, out of the bridge category. So the other one, uh, the Quaker Meeting House is gonna have to involve the D, uh, DOT, uh, and that's gonna require their input and engineering to, uh, for them to approve that.
Does that affect the grant at all?
Yes. Well, they're here, uh, the grant. So the one on Quaker Meeting House Road will not be able to get done. So we had two grants. We had one for Swamp, one for Quaker Meeting.
Right.
Uh, uh, and I know we brought this up last time and I, you weren't here and there was, I think there were two members that weren't here. So we decided to, we would decide to bring it up again when everybody was here too. So trying to remember what you already know and don't know. I think most of you were here for that last meeting, but, uh, the Quaker Meeting House Road effectively gets cut because it becomes a bridge. There's no way we'd have the time to get it done.
Understood, but does the, can we use the grant funds next year or do we lose the grant completely?
Well, we're on a one-year extension now, so, uh, that is in the works to find out if, if they'll extend that another year, if they'll consider the efforts that we've made as, as substantial, um, work or start.
There was some questions raised also last meeting about whether or not how this was worded on the town warrant.
Right. That was what happened. You were the chairman last time and that was, that was, uh.
There was a concern that we voted for two separate things versus a single thing.
In the one warrant.
In the one, yeah. So we, we voted for two crossings where we're gonna only allocate now the money to cover the one.
So what would end up happening is we would be doing one cover at sixty, at, uh, at, uh, out of the hundred and one, fifty, uh, four thousand that would go to.
We probably need our town's attorney opinion as to since it was all combined into one warrant, does the bottom line still hold? Even though we're only gonna do one project instead of two for those dollars?
Thought that was the question. Last week I was posed that. I was gonna get an answer tonight.
I didn't have a chance to get ahold of our attorney.
Okay. So was that, uh, was that one project or two?
Right. Cause the price also increased and we'd be allocating all the money for the one and not the two at this point. Is that, if I remember correctly?
All of it for one, the whole hundred and one thousand dollars?
Yes.
Breakdown.
Yeah, we need the attorney's opinion on that one. That's my line.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you'd only be doing one, not two. So you'd have to come around with the, a second grant and raise the money again for the second one at a later date.
Yeah. So there's a breakdown cost on this sheet that I'd sent. You guys have these or I can?
I don't know, but it, yeah, but I mean, it's kind of irrelevant until we know the answer to the question.
Yep. And then, you know, then the question, I mean, the whole, the, the, not the only reason, but the reason we were doing these is because we got the grant incentive to do them. If there's no grant, then there, there's no Quaker Meeting House project, right? Even next year unless we decide it needs to be done and we fund it out of our own.
Yeah. No, the, the plan is that we're gonna reapply for this again with the, with the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the engineering and it should be, we should be at the top of the list where it was approved before and now that's been permitted.
Especially if they change the rules in the middle of the game, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, all right. I'll get you that, uh, that, that question. I, I apologize.
Yeah, cause we need to know whether reauthorized to even.
I was thinking we were gonna figure that out at this meeting, but I.
Yeah.
It was my, I, I did not call the attorney. That, that falls on my desk.
All right. Uh, okay. So there's, there's, there's these. So, uh, basically, yeah, it would take the whole hundred and one thousand and that would still leave us two thousand dollars short. And I would pay for that out of professional services line. So that's what that breakdown shows. And we'd be getting a much better product with the concrete, with the abutments than we would have been getting with the metal.
Remind me again, Calvin, how did, how did this whole subject come up? Were the, were, did, did the Army Corps approach us on this or how did we know that we needed these replaced in the first place?
Uh, they were identified through the DEP and you submit an application. They go out and rate them and they see how you score and they pick certain ones to get approved. They were both approved. So they were identified as, um, uh, they were, uh, the fish passage and the obstruction and the stream environmental concerns and so.
Yeah, cause the salmon fishing in town has been pretty slow.
It's considered, well, it isn't always if there's salmon there. It's considered salmon, critical salmon habitat if it's connected to something. So it doesn't always.
Yeah.
I mean, when I was doing permitting for the NPRP power lines, we had spots up in the mountain that were nowhere near a stream that were considered critical salmon habitat. Because at a certain time of year, they could be connected. So it's, has to do with what water do they connect to often more so than the actual water.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, okay. We'll get back to you on that.
Calvin, just real quick, just so in case you come back to the table, in regards to the Swamp Road project, how would that fare out depending upon this question that's been asked in regards to the, the grant cross?
If in fact we couldn't combine the dollars to apply to one project?
Would we still continue with the Swamp Road project?
No, we wouldn't be able to do that if we, we couldn't.
If we, if we, if we're not doing this one altogether because it's too expensive, what do we continue with the Swamp Road project?
We wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
We would need the entire one hundred and one to go into that Swamp Road because of, it's the upgrade. It's a whole different product now.
And then potential, so the added expense of fifty-four, five, is that, what is that from?
That is change to concrete and the change of, uh, the abutments and.
So pardon me, and I'm sorry if you guys had the same conversation last time, but I'm like, pardon me says, you know what? We're not doing Swamp Road either. And, and you know, if you, if you want us to do this, you being DEP, and then the grant you put forth originally isn't enough. Because of all these, because of these new requirements that are coming on board. And if you want this done, you're gonna need to bring more money to the table. Otherwise, we're just not gonna do it. So that's, that's kind of where I would be with it, you know?
Well, that's kind of why I was getting back to, you know, what's, what's prompting this in the first place? Do they really even need to be replaced? Is it the state saying, hey, you gotta replace those culverts?
Right.
Or is it just because we think it's about time?
Yeah, like.
And it's thought that we can get five more years out of them?
The Swamp Road.
Get five more years out of them?
Swamp Road floods frequently. It's.
Oh, I get that. I know.
It's underwater whenever we have a major event, we have to close the road at both ends.
But would we necessarily need to do this to address that?
Right, right. That's the question. If you went in there to.
To go to that extent, no, sorry.
If you went in there to upgrade it to get rid of the flooding problem, do you, yeah, do you have to go in with, I'll say, the Cadillac of, of culverts? Or can we just do another bigger metal culvert?
This time we could do like kind exchange or we could do, uh, we could, we could increase the size of the culvert.
Put two, put two of them in or three of them. I mean, I don't know.
It's already raised.
Cause it sounds like you're gonna be raising the road quite a bit too, right? Like, like as in, like a lot of fill and the road's gonna get taller than needing guardrails.
The, 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 the.
How it's gonna off into the river.
Extensions. They have, they have guardrails, yeah.
Well, okay. Part of your discussion leads me to believe since they came and chose from Calvin's perspective, the two projects that they wanted to have done. And now they have changed the specifications to one of those projects, upping the price. I'm wondering if the incremental difference is an unfunded mandate. And are they willing to pay for it?
Are we putting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we see what they're willing to do and then have this discussion?
Let's find out.
So let's, let's find out and then.
Easy enough.
You mean like, uh, they're willing to adjust the grant amount? Isn't that one of the questions that you?
The question is, he was gonna find out first of all if, if we were able to put all the money into one culvert versus two.
Yeah. And the second is, I think whoever the grant issuing authority was, the question Josh raised, like, look, you know, when you, when this first happened, you know, the anticipated cost was X and the grant was gonna cover, you know, X percent. But since then, these things have changed and now, you know, now the town's gonna be into it for just Swamp Road over a hundred thousand dollars. And like, so should we just basically start over and go into a new grant process? And with the idea that if it's something that really needs to be done, then the, the grant needs to cover a larger percentage of it.
You know, it's probably, and my guess is that the grants this year are gonna be significant.
We don't wanna guess. We wanna, we wanna call and ask them and it doesn't matter what we think they might say. We gotta call them and, and see what they will say.
I think by putting it, even if you put it off, I think that the grant, uh, funds are gonna increase to match current pricing because it's gonna.
Maybe they will. Yeah. So anyway, but to Josh's point, I mean, I think we need to ask some of those questions on, you know, do, do they, I don't even know if it's possible. Do grants get amended? I mean, in the middle of the, after they're awarded or not, or do you have to start all over? I mean, I have no idea, but we should be asking those questions.
And if in fact the money they were putting up represented X percentage of the total cost of doing business, then they change the cost of doing business.
Right.
At a very minimum, it should be the same percentage of that new dollar bottom line.
Right.
Yeah, that, that would seem fair.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we, I think we, I think we have our next steps on that one.
Fuel pricing?
That's just an FYI.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was good.
Gone through those, through that exercise.
That's good. It's worth taking another look. Great. Thank you for doing that. We're gonna turn right around and spend it on the truck, though, right?
The new truck. Uh, everybody got this notice, a thirty-eight hundred dollar increase, uh, nothing that Freightliner can do. It's out of their hands. It's straight from Dinlukresler and everybody gets it. And in fact, the salesman said it's, it's so bad that if, uh, they, if, if they cancel the truck, which they would never do because they've got ten other people that would want it because they're two years out. But, uh, that the manufacturer's not even allowing them to save that slot. The manufacturer takes it back and just wipes it out. So they cannot, they couldn't sell it to someone else or allocate that slot. So that slot is, that's how bad the.
Yeah.
The supply chain is and the labor and they just wanna cut whatever they can. So that's a direct impact.
So, but this isn't gonna be delivered until twenty-three and so how, do we pay anything in twenty-two? Like as far as a deposit? So all the expense is gonna be in twenty-three?
Yeah. When the truck shows up, we.
Right. So, which doesn't really impact the warrant article there because technically we don't even need a warrant article to spend capital funds. But, um, so we can make the call when we start looking at twenty-three, when, whether we want to, um, put another article out. Or if there's, if there's already sufficient money in Public Works Capital Reserves, we can just allocate it. You know, there's, there's lots of different ways you can approach that.
I believe they were predicting a November delivery date.
No, November twenty-three?
The truck would be built in November of twenty-two, but then it has to go to be outfitted, which would take another two months, uh, another two or three months.
So it'll be here just in time for summer.
Yeah. Well, they're thinking the truck might be delivered to Maine in November. It's a build, November build date, so it might get here December, actually. And then go to Vikings Ave's for all the plowed gear and stuff and it'll be in a month or two anyway. So it's twenty-three. We don't, we may get to plow with it this next winter, the second half, but.
Yeah. Are you, uh, any concerned that the current fleet won't make it? That the one truck that's being replaced won't make it through?
No.
Okay. All right. Good.
Then why'd we need to buy this truck in the?
You're gonna sell it in twenty-three for more than you paid for it in twenty-two.
I can get one more year out of it.
There you go. That's the answer right there, Calvin. Yeah.
Just keep the new one in the garage then. Don't take it out till summer.
So the, uh, the heating cooling, been working with Mitch on that. Got some prices and he's, he's gonna go over that with you, I'm sure. Uh, but apparently we need to do something with the AC. The guy that actually came and looked at your ACs ought to be changed. They're both the same age. He said they're.
In this building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said, they're the same age as the heating system. They sit out back on the pad. The furnaces are in the ceiling.
It was probably all done at the same time.
The two AC units are sitting out back behind the utility room here and they're just, he said, they're antiquated as the, as the heating systems, but. So I did, we didn't get any prices for those because, uh, I didn't know how you wanted to pursue that, but we let Mitch deal with that. Old town hall, uh, went over there with, uh, Mitch's request, took a look at the roof leaks and, uh, the people who were, uh, the members of the Historical Society were having concerns about water. Coming into the building, getting on, out of backs and things. Uh, so I went over there. There is a spot on the second floor about that big. It is coming through to the first floor. Followed it into the attic, went back and got ladders, went up in there and found skeletons and all that. Uh, got in there and, uh, there is a spot. I was, I had to do it while it was raining. Because once it dries, you see all the old stains and they're dry, but I had to find out which one's still wet, put my finger on it, found it. It's an area about that big and when I stand back from the roof, I can see there's a shingle lifted or missing. Uh, so that could be patched right now. But you can see where there's been many leaks over the years where.
Kind of, is it an asphalt shingle roof?
It's a three-tab flat shingle that needs to be replaced. They need to be redone.
All right. So that, um, that should be built into the capital budget for twenty-three.
So the flashing is all gone. It's leaking at the flashing. It's leaking, uh, and, and you can see where it's been leaking in numerous places.
Yeah.
And the stains reflect that in the ceiling downstairs and.
So that's the thing, you know, it will, we'll wanna get bids, you know, an idea of bids on that going into the budget process so that the budget is, cause that'll be, you know, how much they're gonna cost.
And, and then, and then, uh, looked at the, um.
It's way up there.
Looked at, there's also several areas of rotten wood that you can stick a screwdriver through.
In the roof sheathing or in the structure?
The building, in the wood, uh, the, the bottom scrap boards and places on the outside that need to be repaired. And the paint is all coming off. It's coming off in quarter-sized pieces about that big, just blowing all over the place.
Well, one of the things we were asked about, or I, I, I'm not sure everybody saw it, so I don't know if it was just sent to me, but someone asked about, or maybe they talked about it when I wasn't here. That last fall, we had asked the previous town manager to move forward with, um, forming a committee for the union church to basically, you know, uh, be a group of people that would basically, you know, look at the building, prioritize what needs to be done, come up with a long-term plan. I guess one to, you know, keep it at least, you know, and, uh, from getting any worse, you know, and then what's the long-term maintenance plan? Cause that is a town-owned building. I mean, we own that, so we're, we're responsible for that, so.
Yeah. There's gonna be some, some substantial money involved to keep that place going, but if.
Yeah.
The paint's gotta be done. It's just all blowing off and.
So short, what's the short-term plan on the roof leak then that we have?
We gotta get it patched. So I'm gonna guess two or three hundred bucks. The guy that did the work over there lives right directly across the street and, uh, and just, and, and I think our, our policy is under five hundred. You can do without, uh.
Okay.
Bid. The bigger question is a policy issue and historic preservation issue. That's a money pit.
I know.
How, and what are you gonna get as a return on your taxpayers' investment other than the presence that it represents? I think that's worthy of discussion.
Yeah. And I think it will be because ultimately at some point, I, you know, this committee's gonna be formed and there's gonna be some work done on, this is the investment that's gonna be required. And then a lot of people will ask, well, for what? Other than it's an old building and it's, you know, and it means a lot to some people in town, but you know, you couldn't, there's, there's no parking room or anything over there. You couldn't, I mean, you can't have events there. I mean, or there's no, it's, it's, you know, anyway, not to get into the.
So it becomes an aesthetic historic preservation policy.
Yeah. So.
When you leave there, it's dangerous. There's.
But then, so then it becomes, I guess, is whether, you know, whether it becomes eventually a public expense or a private fundraising grant type of thing. So we'll see. We'll see. But first step is we gotta form a, we gotta form a, form a committee.
There's no return on the investment. I can tell you that upfront.
Right. Not a, not a financial return.
No.
But it's, uh.
nostalgic return.
Right, yeah.
Isn't the chair's intent to wait till the manager is seated to start that process with a committee of citizens and everything?
Yes, that is actually what I responded to this person and I said, you know, that that had been the board's intent and, but that while we, uh, we're in a state where we had an interim town manager and we're in the process of hiring a new town manager, we're trying to keep our focus to mission-critical issues. And that, um, that once the new town manager came on board and got a chance to kind of get up to speed on the core functions of the job, that that would be, we can start working a little bit deeper into our to-do list. And they were fine with that. They understood that, that they.
That would put you into FY twenty-four's budget development.
Yeah, probably, you know, but so we, so in the meantime, we gotta, you know, keep water out of the building at a minimum, right?
Calvin, is the water affecting that clock tower or, excuse me, bell tower?
Nope.
Okay.
It's.
Cause that's been labeled in the. Because that's been labeled in the past of it being an issue.
Coming in below that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's all I left out.
Oh, Calvin, can I ask one quick question from you?
Yeah.
I had a, actually, they work for us, uh, they work for the town, um, the new subdivision on one thirty-six, uh, right at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
Was the entrance permit for that, as far as, is that a state-issued permit, they issued, the state DOT issued that, okay.
And I called in and voiced my concerns, and they had to look at it, and I, I told them, I don't know who approved it, but, uh, there's a supervisor looking into it, and.
Okay, no, I didn't need all that detail, I was just curious if it was in your fault, in your house, or somebody else's, they were, that was all the only question. I assumed it was, but I just wanna double-check.
That's a, gotta be a, yeah, fire chief might visit that a couple times, I'm thinking.
Unfortunately.
Calvin invited me, I was with Calvin recently up there, I think that's Wingate?
Yeah, I believe so.
Um, and I just got a nine-one-one occupancy address for there, so there are people, I think, in.
Starting to move in, yeah.
Yeah, they need to be careful coming out of there.
Yeah, that was.
When you put a snowbank there, it's even worse.
Yeah. I didn't even think about that, yeah, that dip in the road coming in from the free foot and it's.
Oh, man. If you start pulling up, it's like, you get some.
This is the one, just up from the Royalsboro, or, what's it called now, Bliss Farm.
Yeah, 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 just right up, yeah, that was one of the high tensions there on the left.
Yeah.
You know, the differential between maybe you and your pickup, and then if I go there in my pickup, and then I look at it in my car.
In your car, you can't see.
You can't see a thing in the car.
If, if you drive there now and try to take a left to turn in there, you have no idea what's coming over.
No, it's impossible, right.
And I, and, and it's funny, because I said that to my wife coming in, we'd just come from there, boy, this is not gonna be good here, watch this, she's, oh, wow.
All I got was, all I got was response that they're looking into it, I don't know what they're gonna do now, but they.
I noticed that, I was.
Okay, fair enough, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Just for the HVAC system to back me up if I forgot something.
Yeah.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the select board, thank you for your time tonight, uh, I'm the chair of the planning board, and, uh, second or third time, I guess, that I've been here. So I'll start off by saying, not only is today Flag Day, today's the two-hundred-and-forty-seventh birthday of the US Army, so.
Ah, hmm.
A tribute fact, next time we play, um, before, before the planning board, we have one project now, Deer Creek, it's been there a couple of months, which is the thirteen-lot cluster subdivision right past the school, right-hand side, across from Patriots Way, so. Uh, that's moving through the process, our meeting last month, uh, we looked at the complete, one of the things we have to do is look at completeness, which is, had nothing to do with the quality of the data that's submitted, it's, isn't all there. Uh, everything we need to go forward, they were missing a couple of things, we postponed the decision on completeness to our next meeting, which is, uh, the sixth of, of July. And if they get those couple of things that are missing in before the next submission, next Wednesday, uh, we will determine completeness at that meeting, and if it's determined to be complete, we will then do the public hearing, so. We'll announce the public hearing and have that if, if in fact, they, they hit step one, so. Um, so, in the meantime, though, uh, the town planner, the chief, Calvin, I believe, have been looking at the plans that have been submitted, and, uh, so we've been, they've been kicking comments back to the petitioner, so that he or she can start working on their stuff and be ready, so we can keep the process moving as we go forward, so. Do wanna thank the chief and Calvin and the town planner and folks for, you know, joining in on this effort now, rather than, than down the road. So that's the one project we have before us, uh, and I don't know if any more are coming in, but, but that is the one. The other thing we are doing, we had a workshop on the eighth of June to kinda take a look at our, our work plan, uh, what we wanted to do, uh, as a planning board going forward, and there were four, uh, items that came up that would eventually, or could eventually end up as articles before the, the town, uh, town meeting, so I wanted to just kinda introduce them, so that we're all kinda working through this together, and there are no surprises, we get to, to town meeting time. One of them, and the town planner has been working with the various groups on all of these, and George, I think, is, his efforts being well-received by historical and conservation, as well as the planning commission. So one is he's working with the historical commission, I, I guess the planning, so why is the planning board here, um, my understanding is they will have to have a public hearing before they can go, before the town meeting, and we are the board that would, would do that, either you all or us. And so we're gonna kinda do the, the true public hearing for all four of these, uh, potential articles. Um, so the historical commission's working on, uh, some of their stuff, and I think they've got a letter or something in there on tonight's agenda, uh, to do a little bit more there. Uh, the conservation commission, one of the tasks that we've taken on as planning board, and the conservation commission, I think I mentioned this last time, is step forward to help with, is, uh, the resource protection maps got turned down at the, uh, the last town meeting. And so they've taken on the mission of kinda working with George and putting together, he had a map for phase one, a map for phase two, which is delete those lands that don't have any resource protection, add those lands that, uh, that do. So they'll be working with George, and then he and I have both met with them, uh, and so the planning board will keep our finger in the, in the pie, if you will, but they're kinda doing the original work. Um, the third one is, we're trying to take small bites for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is, I can only imagine the town would love to see twenty articles on changes, changes to an ordinance, so we're trying to do things that, that keep it more minimal, and make, one of the goals is to have all the public comments, all the public input, so that when we get to the town meeting, there's a reasonable expectation that it'll pass. I mean, they know, they know there's no guarantee, but the town has had their input to it, it's been tweaked to, as best it can, meet the majority of the folks', uh, goal, so we're gonna start that process, uh, this, now, this fall. Uh, the other one is the back lot, one of the, there was a, some roads issues that came up, one of the parts of that was to narrow a, uh, the road that led to a back lot, and served only one, one lot. And so that, I think, is pretty much written, it'd go from twenty to sixteen feet, which would hopefully help the, the family or whoever wanted to use that back lot, say, wants some cost, and it would be limited to one back lot. So if they decided to expand, and then the, the next forty acres, they'd have to come back and, and change that, the, the road, so.
The other thing that came up in that discussion in, at a town meeting, I remember it vividly, was that it kind of went off on this tangent about, um, because a certain portion of the ordinance regarding the growth district had been repealed, there was technically nothing in the ordinance that, uh, said that the town won't be accepting, you know, uh, new roads, so some language about how, you know, what's required for a new road to be accepted would be, would be great if that was clarified and part of that, uh, in there somewhere.
Be happy to take it back to them and talk about, we were trying to do a very, because it was a fairly controversial topic, we're.
Well, but that's what sunk, that's one of the things that sunk the road, uh, discussion, was that people were concerned, oh, there's nothing in there, the, the language that said the town will not accept, let me back up again. When we had the southwest bend growth district, not the historic district, but the growth district, there was language in that part of the ordinance that's basically said that the town, you know, you know, will not, you know, is not obligated to accept any new roads outside of the growth district, but when we repealed that, uh, growth district as part of the comp plan, then that language went with it, so there's no language anywhere in the ordinance that says anything about, you know, the town accepting or not accepting roads, so, I, I don't think it needs to be, I just, I think it just needs to be a, you know, really just a phrase or a sentence added in, in when we're talking about roads, you know, that, there's, um, that, you know, no ta, no, uh, no road can be accepted as a town road, um, without a town meeting vote, because that's, that's how we've, you know, that's how we've always done it in the past, but.
Do we wanna put any performance standards to that, though?
Well, that's all in there, that's, I think that's.
You kinda wanna almost point to that.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Performance standard.
Right, yeah, no, that's a good call-out, you know, that.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's something, yeah, I don't think, I don't think it needs to be a, a huge, huge effort, I think it's just kind of making sure we kinda put back some stuff that was there.
Basically for that, because I think it pointed to, and used to be brought up to such and such a standard in the, in the ordinance, in the growth district, and generalize it at this point.
I mean, I. And I do remember that discussion, and, and we're gonna be doing this over a couple of months, so as you think of things, we're gonna try to keep it fairly.
Yeah. I agree, I agree with that completely.
Really narrow and, uh, and non-controversial at this point, so.
Yeah.
Not that we don't wanna do controversial things, but we're.
Yep.
We're trying to get a few things through, uh, at the next town, uh, town meeting.
Is there any value in your thinking and discussion about that scenario, but the last lot in is forty acres, and the road that would go in, subject to approval, would be sixteen feet, and they don't need enough space for it to widen, to subdivide the forty acres in the back, what are you gonna do then? Because somewhere, somehow, politics will come into play, and you need to anticipate that in advance, so that if in fact, they're going to only do sixteen, maybe the right-of-way still ought to be.
I think the right-of-way still has to be fifty feet, right, even though the road itself only.
What we're talking about, I mean, I'll, I'll take that back as part of the discussion.
Right, they can't, they can't make it not more, and, uh, additionally non-conforming, or by, by widening it out, taking frontage, et cetera, et cetera, and, and, yeah.
It creates a problem there.
But it's kind of a, I'll say, a owner beware situation.
Caveat and tour doesn't always play out in the court.
It would, the town would be clear that this is for a one lot, and we can certainly put language in that, you know, any addition, you'd have to go back, it had, would require to go back to the planning board anyway.
Yes.
And then, once they do that, then it becomes a subdivision and a whole new rules, I don't know that you, you need to say that, but the whole new, we can't have twenty feet, sixteen feet, twenty feet.
No, you can't have a constriction, no.
Yeah, so, okay, great.
The other, uh, the fourth one is, uh, as you're probably aware, the state, um, passed a law on affordable housing. And so a lot of that does not pertain to Durham, it talks about, you have to have public sewer, public water, growth management district, so a big, two-thirds of that law probably does not apply to us, uh, at this point. But it does, uh, require or mandate that, um, apartments can be put on top of a house, or part of a house, you can build, uh, an addition to a house, and you can have a standalone property on that original lot, so a five-acre lot could have an apartment and a standalone, uh, and it's sort of by right, I guess, for lack of better, we still need to sort through the details on, you know, what's gonna happen, but, um.
Did the state law, does it address like how, um, property tax obligation is allocated in those situations?
It did not, the only thing it said was it could be a rental, so, uh, I would, I don't want us to have doubted if somebody would be smarter than, than I, our ordinance now does allow apartments, does allow the conversion of a single-family home into an apartment.
Right.
Um, so that would not change, I think what does change is you could build onto a house and build an apartment, and it has to have, um, as I understand it, it has to have a bathroom, it has to have, it has to be a standalone living area, or, and it could be attached, or it could be, you know, people throw out the term tiny homes, but that's a misnomer, because those are kinda five-hundred-ninety feet, this could be bigger.
Yeah.
And so, those are the kinda details that we, we need to sort out, and, you know, what are the rules for septic and well, do you have to have your well-tested approval, can handle, uh, an additional apartment, an additional house? The septic, do you have to have a separate septic field, those are the kinds of things we can control, I mean, if the septic system is insufficient for multiple, we can require a separate, uh.
What happens if that parcel has a standalone, separated, second, uh, structure, and they wanna have separate ownership of the two little parcels that are created as a result of that?
I don't think.
I think that's where the land question comes in, right?
I think that's where the road restriction comes back to.
Well, I think, don't, I, the intent of this.
Well, that's true, yeah, no, Rich is raising a good point, it's kind of, it's, those are details and questions really for planning board to work through, and then ultimately, uh, bring something forward, yeah, we're not.
Where we are on that is, uh, the planner is gonna work with, um, main mu, uh, not main mutual, main municipal, and, because we're not the only small town that's now stuck with this rule, and so.
Right, right.
Others are gonna be, and I'm hoping that, that state association would pick up the lead and say, here's a sample ordinance for you guys to use.
That's a, yeah, that's a full agenda for a year.
It is a full agenda, uh, some of it's kind of already done, some of it we're getting help on, so the plan is, uh, planner will report, get the reports out around Labor Day, we'll have public input over the fall, public hearings in January, February, and then come to you with, you know, with either an article to be written up or not for the town meeting, so.
Yep, yep, okay.
Questions?
Great, good stuff, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, Mitch, we're on to you and.
All the other.
Your list.
Okay, um, first, I'd like to introduce Devin to you, Devin is our IT specialist, and he and his mom have done a marvelous job since I've hired them to take care of updating information to our own website, and doing it in a timely manner, and she is also handling the minutes of these meetings, so that we can get those up in a timely fashion. But what we found is that Devin has this unique quality to his abilities, and it is therefore, the microphone being turned over to him, because we've looked at our IT infrastructure, which really started with Eureka House as being your place for meetings, our phone system, which is failing, and a host of other things that are built into that, on top of the other infrastructure, which we have to deal with, and that is our computers and everything, and printers that are now failing, and unfortunately, everything has obsolescence or age depreciation to a point where it's not functional. But Devin, why don't you give us an overview and tell us what you've done, please?
Okay, so I'm gonna start with phone and internet, because as far as I understand it, that should be our first major priority. So you all have a breakdown of costs for phone and internet that I wrote up, you also should have the full verbiage from my contact at Comcast, uh, Thomas Sargent, um, which you can read through if you'd like, but I'm gonna go through it anyway. So to start with the phones, our new monthly cost for phones would be three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents, this is with a VoIP option through Comcast. Uh, we will be getting eighteen phones, that is for this building, the fire department, and public works, all will be getting these upgrades. Our previous cost for phones is actually more expensive, at four-seventy-six seventy, um, which is also, um, getting more expensive starting this month, and that is through consolidated. So their outdated phones are gonna get more expensive. So with the, this new phone system, um, it's Voice Edge, if anyone's familiar, it would be, like I said, around three-ninety a month. Uh, the installation cost, we'll have that thirty-dollar installation fee, which will cover the installation at all three sites, and that is the most basic thing I have for you. Starting with internet, uh, here at the town office, uh, we currently are paying seventy dollars a month, which we've been paying as far back as I can find bills for. Um, and that is giving us email boxes that we don't use, we pay for them through another service anyway, so that's something that we should immediately stop paying for. Uh, we will be moving to Business Three Hundred and Business TV, uh, we're keeping the TV so that we can have the access channel and continue broadcasting to it. Um, and that is something that is going to be included for a free upgrade from our current standard definition to high definition. So.
That's staying with Comcast, all staying with Comcast then?
Yes, staying with Comcast.
Free, because that's all they have anymore, they don't do standard definition anymore.
Um, so I chose for us the Three Hundred Down package, because in the future, if we would like to beam the internet to Eureka, to get both, uh, places covered, we would want that higher level, um, and that would just immediately already have us there for when we get to that point. For the fire department, they currently are subsidized fully, so they are not paying anything for their current internet.
Sub, so, I'm sorry, subsidized by who, gee, by Comcast?
Comcast and E-nine-one-one, sort of as a.
Comcast and E nine-one-one, sort of as a bundle that's been in place for a while.
Which we would have also been if not for those email boxes. So, that's another thing.
Say, I'm sorry, say that part again, so.
The, the seventy dollars that we pay, we wouldn't be paying if it weren't for those email.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
We would have been free also.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
So they are moving up to Two Hundred. They also have a static IP which is for their server. And I'm not gonna mess with that because that's been working fine for them. So that is gonna be a hundred and fifty-nine eighty-nine a month with a equipment install cost of sixty-nine ninety-five. Public Works, they were, as of now, the most recent sort of package, which is still outdated. So they were paying a hundred and ninety-two eighty-five a month for Seventy-Five Down. And we are gonna move them to Two Hundred Down for cheaper, one fifty-nine eighty-nine. So we're saving a little money there with the installation costs as well. So I did some quick math for you. That would put us at a little under a thousand dollars a month for the phone and internet moving forward. Now, the previous cost was seven hundred and thirty-nine fifty-five. So we're only looking at a difference of two hundred and forty-three dollars more.
So. But we get the higher bandwidth, we get the new phone system that isn't working, and we'd have more expensive upgrades to the equipment now. And everybody would be tied together on the same system.
And it opens up Eureka for meetings.
Opens up Eureka for meetings.
And I believe it also opens up potential live streaming on YouTube, which we can't do now because we don't have the bandwidth to do it.
With the bandwidth, you could probably do that unless you.
Yep. As of right now, Town Hall Streams is not working.
Right.
So our current way of doing it is, we take the recording that is already saved and we upload it to YouTube.
After, after the fact, right?
Which still.
Which is fine. That's all, that's more than a lot of communities do. A lot of communities don't record or broadcast at all, so. We're not required to do any of that.
Yeah.
There is a question that I'd ask Devin to check back on, and the chief just raised it. In installing at the fire department, is there any way we can reduce that one fifty-nine eighty-nine through an E nine-one-one subsidy with the new system? If they're doing it with the current system, is that transferable so we can maybe save a little bit on the rental? Don't know.
That is something that I can ask about again. I was told that going forward, we would be going with these standard business rates. And I was told that in multiple different ways throughout my conversations with Comcast. But I can try again and I can press specifically for that as well.
Yes, because I did the math, that would be nineteen hundred and twenty for the fire department currently we're not paying for budgeting for.
Yeah, that's.
I'm sure Calvin could have saw that.
He's pretty good at that.
Underneath that Public Works building. Hey Devin, I, I just have two questions. One, is there a total year commitment since they're providing phones, et cetera?
It would be.
Or total obligation on our end from, as far as?
It's on a two-year contract.
Two-year contract, okay.
Which falls in line with standard business rates and what.
That's fine. Is the contract prorated over the two years if we were to leave after a year, or is it?
That I don't know.
There's discussion, I think we're up for our ten-year renewal here on what would, what would transpire if we were to elect to go to another.
Yes, and that had to deal with, I think, cable as well, Comcast. And I wanted to make sure that I wasn't going in alone.
Sure, understandable. And then last, finally, last week, or excuse me, I apologize, our last meeting, we, the, the discussion that kind of got us off topic here and we suspended this this week because there was discussion of a beam slash satellite versus underground cabling over to there. Did we find out any information about providing internet service directly to Eureka, so whether they would have their own service?
I haven't looked into that yet because I really wanted to focus on the stuff we already have set up. I will get that information for you for.
Oh, no, that's fine. But the discussion from last time, I thought, was to provide service over to Eureka. So you're saying this would help us because we'd have a quicker down, therefore helping us with this possible future satellite that would rest over the Eureka Center for the rest of its entirety, or?
I'm only pushing it off because from what I heard from you guys was that you wanted to look at this in September. But you said at one point that you wanted to work on HVAC first and you would come back to Eureka.
I don't remember the discussion last, last time.
It wasn't last time.
I'm not sure what transpired. I'm just saying, the, the last discussion we had with the board was about getting it to the Eureka Center and what we're gonna find out was what was the cost. We were gonna contact a, the local business spectrum, whoever it is, and see what it was because the, the idea that was floated to the board last time was about putting satellite versus trenching over to the Eureka. And that's what raised this discussion.
And we went direct line through the woods.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm gonna suggest the famous words that you've heard over the last few meetings. This is all IT upgrade to a large degree, especially for a place that doesn't have it. And I'm wondering if that's part and parcel of what our pool was intended to be used for.
Yeah, that might be true, but I still think it's an open question of like how, how it gets executed. Like I think, like whether it's a direct drop-off pole to provide, you know, just the hardware as another building.
And I'm only asking this because that's what the topic was.
Yeah.
Last meeting was. A lot of these upgrades were stemmed to try to provide service in our download speed for this and to provide service for Eureka.
Because if, because if we were going to actually at some point, you know, broadcast from there, that, that feels like it would need to be a, a wired connection versus a Wi-Fi. I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
The latency with the air fiber connection that was discussed with me very briefly would not be an issue for that. I, we only brought it up because it would be less work than having to dig a trench through over.
Yeah, I, to, the trench, I don't think, if I, you know, layman's opinion, I'm not sure that makes sense in, under any scenario. I mean, because I think you're either gonna, you're either gonna do the Wi-Fi and whatever you said, the air.
Air fiber.
Air fiber.
Fiber.
Or drop it from the pole, right? I mean.
It'd be probably one of the two, right?
Yeah.
As soon as we drop it from a pole, I bet you there's a rental fee.
Oh, yeah, it's another, it's another location. It's another building, yeah.
There was a fee involved with the, the air, because, am I?
There will be, you have to buy the hardware for it.
Yeah, there was a, there was a capital cost there.
Monthly subscription or anything like that.
It would be our own responsibility at that.
So this is like a wireless fiber, for lack of a better term.
Yes.
I've never heard of such a thing.
You shouldn't have been.
It's fairly new technology, but the distance between the buildings is short enough where we shouldn't see any major problems.
Part of me kind of likes that. I mean, I don't know how much hardware it costs, but assuming it's fairly reasonable, I kind of like that idea because you can, you can execute that when you need to. And then if you find that it's, you know what, that's not, that's not cutting it, you can always drop a line from the pole afterwards at that point, right?
I agree. I, I cabled this for your expertise, just so you know, that was kind of.
Well, I don't know if I'm the technology expertise guy, but.
It wasn't really driving with me and I was like, well, why don't we just call them and put in our own service over there at the Eureka Center?
Yeah, which is definitely an option. And, and, and I think that, that might be part of a larger assessment on, like, because there's gonna be other technology that would need to be in there in terms of like ceiling mics and, and things like that, so. Because that's our, that's our issue here in this room, to not be able to do hybrid type meetings that the pub, the two-way that the public can participate is it's really the audio issues and the feedback that you get when you try to do that. And latency actually is a, an issue there too, but. Okay.
Thank, thank you for your work.
Yeah.
And you'll, you'll look into this for the next meeting or so?
Yeah, you want full fees that cost everything for air fiber?
Yeah, what, yeah, what, is that, yeah, so what are the questions we're looking for answers for?
My, my impression is, is, you know, I think the expectation would be the, the cost for doing it each way. Yeah.
So that we can sort of look and.
Dropping a line from a pole.
Dropping a line.
Doing the air fiber.
Yep.
So I can already tell you that if you want from Comcast a new site set up there from the line, it would be at the same rate as, say, the fire department.
That's what I would have assumed, so. That's, it's like another location.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just. The only, the last question I have on this, with regards to the fire department, do you, do you guys see the nest, the need to upgrade versus right now it's somewhat complementary? Is, is that, is that a hindrance on you, this complementary system versus upgrading to this, you know, a hundred and sixty-dollar system?
It has held us back actually.
Okay.
He did come over, our phones are antiquated, not get messages. It, it is a communication upgrade for us, better business for the, for the community.
No impact to your nine-one-one system at all?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Hey, hey, good work, Devin. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Laying this out, thank you.
All right.
Next item.
Next item is.
Okay, IT for phone tech equipment.
Energy cost. We kind of did that one already, right?
Yes, and we didn't want to bore you with it or beat you over. It's, it is what it is and with the work that Calvin has done, he's absorbing that going forward. And as you said earlier, we received the notice from Comcast franchise for renewal process. And I simply asked the question, do you want to have one or two of the select board members along with anybody else who has the technical prowess to engage that, that negotiation process? I'm accustomed to doing cable in other communities like Time Warner Cable. I've never dealt with Comcast and I don't know if they come to the table and say, you have no choice, this is our territory.
Well, I think that's pretty much, yeah, I.
So I seek your advice.
I wonder if, well.
If we have no choice though, what's the, what's the renegotiation slash ten-year commitment?
To see if we can get it to the lowest possible price for the benefit of municipality.
I think, I think we don't, I think that's part of, we don't know what we don't know with this. And so I, I really wonder if we should find, almost like a buyer's agent, you know, consultant type, somebody who understands this process and has maybe worked with other towns. On that, I mean, we do, again, we haven't reached out to him yet, but there is a gentleman that lives in Durham that's, he's appointed to the, the governor's board there on broadband. Within, so even if he might not be the guy to, you know, have all the insights of negotiating a cable of the Comcast agreement, he might be able to steer us to somebody that would be.
Would, would it be the preference of the board to have you make initial contact on behalf of the board?
I can, I can do that if you guys, well, it'll be, it'll be a while. I'm pretty much gonna be out of circulation for a little over two weeks.
I would, I would think this is somewhat, that's standard operating procedure in towns, that these contracts are renewed. I'm sure there's other town managers out there that have gone through this posture, that we could reach out to one of them and say, what, what is the?
Well, example, the Lakes Region Communities Office of Ago all created a consortium and they dealt with what was Time Warner Cable. And because that was their service area and it became a matter of dollars and cents at the table for the services being provided, the drops, the connection, the annual or monthly fees. And those are the kinds of things, because there's certain things that the FCC requires, you can't change it just because you want to change it.
Right.
But the concern here is this may not be the same person sitting at this end of the table as this.
What's the timeframe? What's the timeframe we're looking at?
You're, they're probably a year out before it expires.
So we got a little time. And I, this is, I wonder if MMA might offer any services here too.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
They would certainly, certainly they can, again, they might say, well, we don't offer that service, but you could talk to so-and-so. You know, because they're gonna be wired into, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, and possibly it might be as simple as reaching out to previous select boards like Jeff or Mark, who now is a board.
Yeah, there was a guy, there was a guy named Jeff Leighton. He, I guess he doesn't live in town anymore. I actually asked Mill Simon about him a while back. Because he was kind of the guru of the telecommunications committee when it was like actually, you know, a standing committee. And I think that was the last time we did a contract, I'm pretty sure it was him and that committee that was kind of on point.
So if you can make that initial contact and just keep the board informed and see what path you want to take, but.
I'll see what I can find out on, on broadband. I'm not, I mean, sorry, not broadband, but on cable franchise agreement. Do I have the, I'm not, do I, did you send out the email that you got from Comcast? Did you send that to us about what?
I don't think I did, but I can make sure.
Send that, yeah, would you send that, please, and?
Will do.
Okay.
Just want to raise to your attention a policy discussion that we really should have at some point. I don't know, as we move into sending out the tax bills over the next thirty-plus days, we also recognize that we've already put on notice those people who've been delinquent and haven't paid. And as you well know, every community through its leadership and its tax collector has the ability to place a tax lien on the property after eighteen months of effort. And that's a five-year commitment. In some communities that I've been at, there have been policy decisions that have said, we are going to take the properties by lien if they expire and they haven't been paid in full, except if there's asbestos. Modular homes pre nineteen seventy-six, they've created a policy is what I'm getting at.
Hutts homes pre seventy-six.
Yeah, so that you're not buying into a laden property that you have to then properly dispose of. The other thing they, they do is they prohibit people from living in the properties altogether because you're now the landlord. And it's your liability if they get hurt, even though it was, it still is technically their property. So I want to have that discussion with you, not make a decision tonight, and start thinking about what you've done in the past as a lien is perfected and it's good for five years and what it is that you want to exercise. On one hand, there's no sense perfecting a lien if you're not gonna do anything about it. There's got to be an encouragement for people to want to pay up so that they can redeem their property. We don't want to be the realtors, if you will. On the other hand, if we just simply say we're not gonna do anything, you've lost the carrot in the stick.
We, it, it's been a consistent, and I don't know if it's a policy in the sense that it's like actually written down anywhere, but whatever the, whatever's, I think permissible by the state, that's what we do. So if we put the lien on, when that gets to a certain point, if they haven't paid, we foreclose. We foreclose, they're gone unless they come in and pay. And there's one property in town that, that we, like you said, that we don't take because it's the old town dump.
That's right.
And we don't want it.
And that's a, and that's a legitimate thing.
Right.
But no one's gonna move in on the property, whereas if it was my home and I was a real smart fox, I'd say, take it and I'll continue to live there.
We have.
If we take it, we, we take it.
I don't think, and I don't think we've ever actually had to take one. I think we've come close a couple times, but somehow they always come up with the money.
Well, I, I'd like to see you have that discussion and make it very clear so that I can write down the policy for you. Because if you go into a discussion eyeball to eyeball with a delinquent taxpayer and they know in advance it's not the policy, they're gonna pay you for all you risk.
But we, we've had this happen and it was pretty clear cut and dry, so there's a policy in place.
Yeah, I think it's like, you know, I, because I think it's prescribed in state law what's, what you can do, right?
Title thirty-six.
And I think that, I think we pretty much follow that, like we.
I think, I think that's the consensus and, and so I think if you want to draft up a policy that, that matches the statute, I think, I'd be okay with that. But I, I agree, there needs to be a policy and it needs to be enforced.
I'd be okay with that, but I, I agree, there needs to be a policy and it needs to be enforced.
And that, that has been the history, so.
And if that's been the history, then I.
I would just, before we draft one, just make sure we have one, cause I, I mean, I, I think we, I think we do. Like I said, we've, we've, we've had people in front of this board in the past three, four years that have had.
Yep.
That we've had to deal with this in the past, and we follow the policy.
Yeah, I don't wanna be heartless, and in other communities where in fact we've given them notice that they've got X number of months, we try to set up a plan for installment, but if they reach that date and they still have not made their payments, they have made partial payments, if there's less than twenty dollars, that's a different argument. But if it's more than twenty dollars due, they're gonna lose their property for, for that amount that's outstanding. And it makes you, the elected officials, look like you have no heart, but on the other hand, it's a clear concise policy because of that, otherwise people would abuse it, not pay their taxes, and you keep borrowing more money to make up the difference. And that's not fair to the other taxpayers.
The one thing, I guess that there's one thing that we have seen, and I guess this is the way, it was like, you know, if they're, they could be several years behind, but they just pay the year they need to pay to keep it from being foreclosed. You know, and they just keep playing that game.
And they're entitled to do that.
Year after year after year, yeah, so.
But if it gets past that point, it goes right to Jack is what.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and, um, yeah.
It's out of our hands, really.
And it's, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm sure some people would see it as heartless, but it, we've seen it as protecting the interest of the taxpayers in the town as a whole.
Yeah, MMA.
Like I said, in, in every single case, when the crap hit the fan, they found the money.
Yes. And, and I, I think that's human nature.
Yeah.
I just wanna bring your attention to that issue, because a few years ago MMA said, you don't wanna become the landlord to the properties, because if there are things that don't meet code, you become liable for all of that.
Right, yeah, we're, yep, we're on, we're, we're of the same eye there on that.
Okay, I, I will attempt to put together a draft and I'll contact MMA on that as well. And it's just something that you have so that it's clear, concise, and you can bring it to your next manager and tax collector. All right, uh, I also provided to you strictly for your FYI with position descriptions, tax collector, finance. And the reason I did that is in working with the larger committee on the town manager hiring process, the committee asked me to put together something that effectively represents what is expected from the town manager in this community. And so I provided that, but I then came to realize that in part, those are the other two critical positions that the town manager should be aware of, and that there are other people who in fact are deputy treasurer or deputy finance director or deputy tax collector. And so I put those together, take them home, review them. If you don't like what's there, we can change it, but at least it'll be something in writing so that the next person who comes in has a better start point and understanding as to their position descriptions in the organization.
That's great.
The bad news.
Sorry? Oh, I said, thank you, that's great.
Cause that started with, and he, he's the chairman of all of that, and it was his committee who asked for it. As Calvin will tell you, we have received notification of the automatic increase to the truck that has been ordered.
Yep.
And you can argue the unfairness to all of that, the reality is you either accept it or you give it up. And you can't get in the next line, cause you're not, and it's still gonna be cheap money.
Somebody else will buy it from them.
Right off the bat.
Yeah.
So do we need, is there any action required on that, or is that just a?
I think there ought to be a, a motion on the record that says the select board has agreed to the forced increase for the truck that is being purchased for public works.
Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion that we approve the, what was the term you used? Forced increase for the, uh, previously ordered, uh, truck of thirty eight hundred dollars. Was that, that was the amount, right?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is it gonna be any more?
Yeah, is it gonna be any more increases?
Between now and then, we may find that there are metals or something that force it to go up again.
Freaking Putin launching a nuke, who knows what happens, right?
Truck increases for that, only cause we, when they outfit this thing, there might be another increase.
All I can think of is look at the amount of, uh, car thefts have been going on with the, uh,
Oh, Cadillac.
Mission control, the Cadillac convertible.
Oh, right, yeah.
Did you second that?
Todd seconded, yeah.
Okay.
And then, then my, my final thing would be, do we have to, do we have to specify how we'll pay for that money? And being that it's not in this, doesn't look like it'll be in this.
In rubles. In rubles.
No, it won't be in this.
It won't be in this fiscal year, so that's.
Basically, we're authorizing Calvin to say, yes, we will pay that, go ahead, build the truck.
Right, right. They may ask us at the time of delivery into the state for some payment.
Right, that, and maybe Calvin, I didn't know if we pay for the truck manufacturer at the time of delivery and then we make one more payment at the time of outfit, because it's a different company that outfits in.
Yes.
That's the way we used to do it before I got here, was the truck was one bid, the outfitting was another. I didn't like that, because if something happens, they have both do this, I said, I want one entity responsible for the entire truck. We don't pay anything until the truck is completely outfitted and delivered.
So the truck, whoever you buy the truck from is basically subbing out the outfitting, but it's all coming under that.
They're responsible for the entire truck.
Yeah.
I don't care who's they're gonna blame for the cloud or the weather, you're gonna fix.
And we pay final after, after it's completely delivered, soup do not's delivered to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we don't have to, I guess, the, really the question was, do we have to designate where this comes from, on the bill?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe we do.
Okay.
Cause we're not, we're not actually spending any money right now. We're authorizing him to commit to spending the money, but we, we can decide as part of the budget process whether we just wanna.
Right, cause it's.
Take it out of capital, or you know, whatever we want.
And then replenish that at some point through appropriation.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm not gonna jump to the last item.
We haven't taken a vote yet, so, uh, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we have five zero.
Gee, I marked down unanimous beforehand.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna skip mileage for a second and go to something that's near and dear to both this building and fire department. In this building, you have one HVAC system in the ceiling that you well know has already failed. And they're both purchased and installed in the same year, and the recommendation has been, if you're gonna do one, do them both, otherwise they'll be coming back again. And then the others through the town's fire department, and as I understand it, there's one or two offices involved and the one large cooling room, which is part of that as well. Uh, we received quotes, and I'm going to give you the numbers right off the bat. Let me start with the fire department. In this case, what we found was there, the product's name would be Yorkie, and it came in at fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars, and it's a ducted system.
Okay.
The reason it's fifteen one seventy one is the base rate plus the cost of an electrician to come in and they have to do certain things, uh, to the, the box itself. Yorkie is also a reasonable brand, from what I'm told, uh, and there's really no back order delay. The second bid that came in is sixteen thousand sixty dollars and eighteen cents for Samsung, it too is ducted. The question is, how long will it take for them to get the product before they can even install it, as I understand it? Then there's also what they call a non-ducted unit that's almost the same price for fifteen thousand one forty one. I'm not giving you the names of the companies, I've got them here, but really this is driven, considering the products are fairly equal, you have to decide which, do you wanna go strictly by price? The chief is here to make a recommendation, uh, what he has researched as well. Then you have the town office, and we initially got a single unit cost of doing business at ten thousand five hundred and sixty seven dollars and forty seven cents. That means replacing one unit, and it's the HVAC, but now we're talking both units. Because if one, they're both the same age and it's about ready to crap out. So that's twenty one thousand one hundred and thirty five dollars.
Does that include ACs, or is that just the heating unit? Just heating?
Just heating.
Just heating here.
So the end results really come down to what you as a group wanna do with the dollars and cents that we have, and how do you wanna pay for it? And this may be another one of those items that you wanna get the public's involvement with through a town meeting, especially if you're gonna use ARPA funds, because you never appropriated funds, you never planned on it, it happened. And something like this fits in very well with the ARPA purpose. And basically, if you ended up doing everything that's involved, you're somewhere in the vicinity of about fifty four thousand dollars. And I've, there's always something that you never anticipate, but that's fifty four thousand dollars.
That, so the fifty four, yeah, the fifty four does not include AC. All right, seventy five grand is what we're talking here.
So I wanted you to hear the numbers, do the debate, I can try to answer specific questions, but we have two very capable individuals here who have worked through this, but we have the breakdowns. You know, right down to the nuts and bolts going forward, but the reality is, they're not that all far out of line.
Right, so, and the same three companies bid both built, they basically, they bid both buildings and basically broke it out separately so we can see the costs for each building.
Only one bill, only one bid was for this building, correct?
Yes.
Three, two other bids.
Oh, why is that?
For this building, that's, they came in and measured, but I, it's only the one, one company.
There should have been one already in there for fifteen thousand something.
Yeah, hold on.
So, do we have two different people managing bids for the two separate buildings, is that?
I think the chief was handling fire, and then Calvin was handling here. And that was before I arrived, they started getting.
However, I, I believe Mitch delegated Calvin to either.
To coordinate.
Coordinate, and that I believe is what Calvin's done, he's come to me, I gave Calvin all my information.
You had three already.
Yes, for my side, which is heating and cooling, two heat pumps.
Yeah.
All, all companies went with that for the fire side of things. Calvin, due diligence on all of it, and, and I believe we may have two quotes for here, because one of my guys was the originator of finding out it's in the trust, one's failed. It, it, not that it's a bundle, but they, they were willing to do both.
So for this, for this amount of money, I believe we need, we're supposed to be doing an RFP for this.
We have gotten a re, verbal request for proposal, but we have not advertised it, correct?
Yeah, and I, I think if you look at the procurement policy, you'll find that for something this large, that, so I think, and I mean, I think this is good foundational work, but it feels like we need an RFP in the scope, with the scope of work described as both buildings, you know, and all that, and, um, cause I'm not, I'm not sure we can act on.
I, I wanna stick with policy, but I wanted you to know the magnitude of money you're dealing with.
So, but I think, I, that, I mean, and that is helpful, um, you know, if we were going to schedule some sort of a, um, you know, if, you know, a public hearing, and I think, you know, we could do that as part of a regular board meeting. I don't think we need a separate, I mean, cause we'll have the town meeting, and, and if, what we heard at town meeting was that, you know, people wanted to say and how ARPA funds were spent, and I think at the time, it wasn't known, or I, I should, it wasn't realized that, um, I think the concern was the board was that we would just go spend the money. However, we saw fit without public input, you know, um, but now we know, I think at the time, people didn't realize that we can act, we have to actually have separate spending articles to use ARPA funds. So that is going to be the opportunity for public input and, you know, what people can, especially at least for this first round, which is kind of like, you know, need to do type stuff, you know, which is, you know, if it's seventy five HVAC and just, let's just round it, another twenty five for technology, you know, we still got over three hundred thousand dollars left to figure out something to do with.
Now, now, did we receive two hundred or four hundred thousand dollars in the first trench?
Two hundred in the first one.
That's what I thought, cause I've been using four hundred plus or minus.
As the total.
Total amount.
As the total, yes, that's right.
And, and I wanted to give you at least, A, the understanding, and B, the need for having to have a special town meeting to go through all of these, cause if we wait till the fall, these ladies are gonna be sweating bullets, something fearful in here.
Well, yeah.
I think, I think we need a, we need to do the RFP without questions, it's too much money.
Yeah.
Irregardless how we go, we need a scope of work for both of them.
Right, right.
Before we can go forward, I would just caution, cause I've had this happen to myself, I'd also possibly ask the HVAC guys building in regards to this one, how much carpentry work's gonna be involved to get those units up there? Cause there may be some repairs that are not on the HVAC contractor's side of the house.
Right, right.
I did ask that question, I said, he would take it apart, bring it down in pieces, what's up there, and then bring a new one up in pieces. Maybe assemble it in the attic.
So the minimal damage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was there anything else that you could answer that they've talked about?
Well, I guess, if you're gonna do an RFP, someone has to put together a spec list, what's the minimum BTUs, what's the needs?
Right.
You've gotta bid apples to apples, and if you just say, I want three cloths.
Right, that's.
You get all kinds of stuff.
Yep, well.
But who establishes those bid specs?
We don't have an engineer here, and I'd have to go back now and look at that, because even if you're requesting proposal, we can generalize with certain language, all the necessary things that have to go with it to make it fully functional.
You, you can make an evaluation of the, the, what's the term, heat load or whatever, that.
The opposite here is a standard number.
We need heat calks and they go from there.
Square footers and heat calks.
You also have cooling calks if you're going with AC. So I mean, I mean, most, you can hire somebody like, um, HVAC services out of Westbrook, they can come in, give you heat count. They assess everything, and they'll tell you what size units, et cetera. They'll also give you a quote on this.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
They'll give you the scope of work or what you need, the chief's, sounds like you got multiple options over there, cause one, some of them are heat pumps, some of them are forced hot air.
Yeah.
Couple different, there's a couple different options to take there.
Which we're willing to accept, now here's an example from this one particular company, the detail of exactly how they arrive. All the items, and I'm not gonna get down to three screws and two nuts, but all the necessary assembly to meet the manufacturer's requirements for installation and efficiency. And to me, that becomes a request for proposal, and I have to go back to look at your policy more specifically to say, if we, we advertise, we're requesting it and ask at least three people to come in, we've satisfied that.
As far as that goes, you could use the specs as far as, cause I'm sure he's telling you what type of BTU the furnace is gonna be.
How much heat will it?
Um, which is, which is, as far as the AC though, we didn't bid that out, so.
No.
You'd be, again, my opinion, you'd be foolish to go in there and tackle all those upstairs and not replace the outside units.
Yep, right.
And, um, also the, the caveat was the electrical upgrade.
Yeah.
I did for the fireside get an electrical, um, quote with an electrician that is teamed up with one of the providers.
Is that forced hot air over there now?
Forced hot water.
But the, the, the heating system is, it's first, oh, it's a boiler?
Yes.
Okay.
Which was replaced, so the heat pumps would be a secondary heat source, cause, cause that boiler's really.
Well, just, he mentioned a forced hot air, that's why I mentioned.
Oh, yeah, no, mostly it's about the cooling, those heat pumps would be for the cooling side.
No, what, the york that he suggested was a forced hot air, if you don't have duct work, I don't know how you're gonna achieve that, that's the reason why I was asking.
Right, so, forced hot wa, I, I think Calvin's about to say, differing of opinions by each, uh, quote.
But no duct work, no force.
Well, it's, it does have, they're, they're ducted units, it doesn't blow heat in the winter.
Yeah, but, but what, how's the duct gets in?
There's no ducks.
They're gonna install the ducts.
Right.
It's gonna, it's gonna drop into the bathrooms and the different offices, whereas it, you, instead of just being one that sits on the wall and just blows into an open space, like the one will be in the training room.
Yeah, yeah.
Other one is going to actually blow into each office and into the restroom. Because, uh, that, that's actually a cooling center, I believe that's, that's, that's considered our cooling center, so it needs to be.
Yeah, we always used to maintain that by having one of those big units, I know what's it called, but we switched two years ago, maybe, I think it was two years ago, to the cooling center being the Eureka, cause we put in two overpowered, um, heat pumps in over there. I think it was two years ago, to the cooling center being the Eureka, cause we put in two overpowered, um, heat pumps in over there, I think we got. Fifty, sixty thousand BTUs, and most of that was because they were trying to cool fifty people, up to fifty people when they designed that system. So the cooling unit was designated at the Eureka.
That is, okay, well, um. New to me, that information's new to me.
What's that? Cooling center was designated once we put in those new. Cause we put in extra, we put in extra, um, heat pumps over there, we could have got, just from a heat perspective, away with just one of those, I think it was a thirty-six hundred BTU. We put in two of them because the town clerk at the time said, well, there could be as many as fifty people in here, and they did the BTUs based off fifty people for cooling it. So that's how that ended up being the new cooling station.
So new to me, would the school, in a reunification center in an emergency, the fire station?
Sure.
From the school, their plan, which I've read, walk the students down.
Right.
Whether that's a hostile, a, 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 a problem with the building, whatever, their, their backup plan.
Yeah.
Still, still providing for our training center, because it's a long facility, a secure area for kids.
I got a problem with it, I just.
That's how that's, you know, I didn't know about the Eureka.
It's like a warming center, I believe the Eureka Center's always been the warming center, and then we switched it, not switched it, bad word, but it became a cooling center. Once we installed those new heat pumps.
Okay.
Beeped them up.
Just to get like here, like the offices, like the training, we have no cooling at, at all, we have one window unit.
Yeah, I'm aware, I've spent many summers over there, many days, talking to the previous chief, so.
Oh.
Many, many, many days, um, so yeah, no, I get it, I just didn't understand the. If there's no duct work, typically duct work nowadays, costs you sometimes more than the actual furnace duct work, so expensive.
Again, I think it was differing of opinions of the installers, of how they wanted to do it.
Well, ducting is, be more efficient to get to different rooms for sure, as long as you got suspended ceiling.
Right.
They, I don't believe they do, and that's all she rock over there.
The ceilings are sheet rock over there?
Some are.
Your office is she rock, I believe.
Some are.
Fathom's is she rock.
Um, it does have a larger than crawl space above it all, and there's such. Small squares, that I think they were trying to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, the electrical was different. Everything.
Oh, that makes, yeah, the electrical would be different on the, on the other end, but, um, but those squares and what you got now, they're using those Samsung cartridge units up in the.
Yeah. Okay, but I think we, either way, I think we need to put those.
Yeah, so that, I was just looking through the purchase policy and, our purchase policy is not crystal clear, shocker, um, but I think. Yeah, I think, you know, read through it, I think it's probably an inform, it's the, it's probably the informal bid process, um. And then, uh, with, but the, the, the thing that's kinda common throughout these, the scope of work and, and the specs need to be clearly defined. But it also says in here is like, you don't wanna get so specific with the specifications that you, you know, severely limit what options might be brought to you. But just, you know, I, whatever the BTU that they're saying these furnaces are, supply and install two fifty-six thousand, whatever the hell it is, I don't know what it is. Fifty-two thousand BTU furnaces with two, if they're two-ton air conditioners with two, two-ton air conditioners, minimum of twelve sear. Whatever the sear unit you're looking for for efficiency.
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my, my partner on the guy's at HVAC guy, I work midnight, I can have him help you out with that if you want.
I, I, I think that'd be good, and then I can compare it with what our expectations are and then put it out there. And pay for the advertiser, where would you like to advertise it?
I read the policy first, I'm not sure that it needs to be formally advertised.
Supposed to getting three different.
Yeah, I think you can, you can, yeah, so I think you can send it to three, but you just need to send it, you don't, uh, to at least three. And I don't think we're doing the formal bidding process that we advertise and open seal bids at a specified date and all that, I don't think, I don't think we're talking that. So, yeah, we do need to move on this, I mean, there is language in there, this is the, you know, send it to three, unless there's a compelling reason. That you just, you just can't do that, like maybe there aren't three qualified contractors, or maybe the time is, is of such the essence that. You know, um, you need to move, or maybe there's plenty of contractors, but everybody's so busy, nobody wants to bid on it, I mean, it's all that, all those reasons.
That's all, those are all valid.
Yeah.
We typically put it on MMA, all the bids, and everybody's tapped into that, all the companies.
Sure, yeah, whatever, whatever, yeah, that's usually a pretty efficient, um, way to go. Yeah, and I think, you know, I think don't overlook putting it just on our own local communication channels, cause there's a lot of, you know, uh. Tradespeople that live in this town, so sometimes they'll step up too, so. Okay, so, let's see.
Keith, thank you, we'll be back at it again.
Sounds good.
We've already got a couple bids, so. Last item that I have for you is. Just making sure all the votes have been taken care of.
Oh, that's right, the voting. That, that's where you kept.
That was a good time today.
Allow me to just finish this.
School, school one was different this year, no, no number.
We're now clear.
The school law? On the vote itself, usually the numbers on the actual.
On ballot, yeah.
On the ballot.
Then a question.
Second question of, do we have to ever bring this to vote again?
Well, they're, they're required by law to ask that question every three years, every three years, yeah, um, that, that was part of the old school law, so. Okay.
The last item, the manager's report, and thank you for your patience, uh, I've received a request. From one of our employees who has to use his vehicle for doing all the code inspection work, and. In the last four weeks, we've seen a complete change in the cost of petroleum products, and that includes gasoline as well. As the chair and I talked briefly before the meeting, the IRS isn't gonna change their fifty-eight point five cents. Until December thirty-first and thereafter.
Right.
And it's not gonna capture the time of, of expense, and this individual's saying, look, I, I know that. The IRS is what I'm supposed to get, but these are unique times, and he's looking for some consideration as to a better mileage. And my recommendation to the chair at the time that we were talking privately was, you know, I don't wanna make a policy that we're just gonna simply bump it up. Different ways you can play that game, but what's more reasonable is purchasing power, and, and quite frankly, there's an eight point five percent. Loss of purchasing power because of the inflation, and if you look at something like a temporary seventy or seventy-five cent. Per mile reimbursement, to be brought down immediately to the existing IRS level. If the price of gasoline comes down to three fifty in the state of Maine, you've accommodated both sides without gorging. Your budget, but on the other hand, respecting the fact that fifty-five, fifty-eight point five cents isn't gonna cover all of their costs. And some of that has to be wear and tear, as you've pointed out, for the machine itself, so I bring that before you, uh, for your consideration. Is there a possibility that those individuals will have to run their vehicles, and right now we have code enforcement. And then periodically, one of our clerks will go to Lisbon Post Office fairly consistently and, and do the banking. We should not have them have to subsidize our taxpayers for the use of their own vehicle, and I'm not recommending having any clunkers out there. That we have to take care of.
What about the chief?
I negotiated upon hiring a flat rate fee, uh, uh, using my truck as the fire chief's vehicle. Mitch was aware of it, discussed it with me, um, I, I wasn't planning on changing that.
So do you have a specific proposal, like an amount?
Yes, um, I can justify seventy-five cents from the fifty-eight point five. And that the, if the price of gasoline comes down, state have made this, this area. Back down to three dollars and fifty or three dollars and seventy-five cents, that's when you go back to fifty-eight point five.
Have you discussed that with this person, are they, are in agreement that that seems like a fair approach?
I have discussed that I would bring it before you, but I didn't wanna get in the middle of a public negotiation process.
Right.
I think that if you, knowing what I know, that should satisfy. The temporary increase based on his gas mileage performance.
It's just out of curiosity, and maybe, maybe it's not applicable municipal, but how would that, if the, if the government's at fifty-eight cents, if you give an extra twenty. It's almost considered direct income.
Unless the individual can justify to, through his.
Right, but how, how do we currently pay reimbursement, is it through, it's not via, it's not via his, like a paycheck as far as like taxes?
It's, it's a payable, not a paycheck.
Right, it's payable.
And then what they do with it in terms of their reporting is their business, uh, they are being paid to use their vehicle. And I would think that if they maintain depreciation schedules and all of their receipts, I mean, that's what I had to do. When I was an active employee.
It's just hard, I didn't, I didn't know if we'd just, you know, give a stipend for once a month for these gas prices and so forth.
That's an approach, like I wanted, like, are, are you allowed to reimburse mileage? At a rate higher than what the IRS?
You can as a best, well, you can, but you can't, you can't, it's not an exp- you have to.
But the tax liability belongs to that person.
You could do receipts, which is direct pay, you know, actual.
It's hard to do receipts.
Hard to, well, hard to do it, I get it, but that's actual, and then otherwise it's IRS, I believe, so. I, I don't know what's in between, and now per diem up in Maine. So the fifty-eight cents comes from where?
IRS.
IRS puts it out, and probably by December, we will see what the IRS rate is.
The mileage rate up here is forty-five cents, it's not fifty-eight if you go per diem.
What do you mean by per, what?
Meaning if you're on a business trip and you were, you're using your own.
Is that a state thing, or is that like a B I W contract thing?
It's a state thing, I just.
I know that in all of my Maine communities, it's always been you follow the IRS.
Right, and that's typically what you do.
And that's why your policy basically is fifty.
I didn't know how it worked for the gentleman or the, the employee, excuse me, on, 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 from a tax thing, that's why I didn't know if you set it up as more of a, a COLA. Cost of living allowance because of, you're really only supposed, you're not supposed to exceed that, at least on the business world.
Yeah, but then, that makes it tougher to make that temporary, right? Unless you, well, unless you do a stipend.
Suspended at whatever his suspension was, at three fifty.
Drops down, the whole purpose of jumping it higher was because it's a trigger of inflation that is very clear.
Right.
And then you have a, a, a baseline that once you approach it again, it returns back to the IRS rate.
You know how many miles approximately a week?
Haven't got that yet, uh, but he's out every day, so even if it's ten miles a day, that's fifty miles a week. Round numbers, sixty miles a week, back and forth, back and forth.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's call it fifty miles, let's call it a hundred miles a week, that's twenty bucks at twenty cents. That's why if you did a twenty, twenty-five dollar cost of a living allowance.
But your building cost of living into a, a base, and I don't wanna do that either, I'd rather, at base rate, I'd rather have it as a one, as a.
Or we're making a fictitious rate from, you know, utilizing a government source and, and making it our own, that we don't have anything to justify it on. Other than the cost of living, everybody noses up, but until the government adjusts that, we can't, I don't know how it, it fears on municipality. I can't just tell my employees, I can give you seventy-eight cents and then deduct seventy-eight cents, because the rate's only fifty-eight.
If I remember, when I used to do it more actively, and my accountant would say, well, where are your receipts that justifies? The incremental amount that you're getting, even the IRS rate, because if it only cost me fifteen cents a mile, cause I was getting a hundred and fifty miles to the gallon on a. Motorcycle, the rest of it is considered earned income and subject to taxation, so I.
Typically Mitch, you get two options, you either get to claim all receipts, or you get to claim mileage. It's, it's not bold.
To the IRS.
Correct.
Right, but to you folks, it can be, you've adopted the IRS number.
That's my point.
And you're saying that you can't change that.
So, right, so the question is, do, do you just bonus?
Well, well, we can change it, and he's gotta pay taxes.
Right, right.
And if that's a choice, we shouldn't be making for that person, so they have to understand it if they wanna accept it.
Just to be, I don't think this is a big deal, it's just whether or not you think it's, I, I, I don't think it's unjustified to give the guy twenty-five, thirty dollars a week for passing.
Right.
I, I don't think that's, that's an issue whatsoever.
I, I'm open to going back in either direction, but if, if there was something that you all had a tendency to support. I would ask Jack what his opinion is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just don't know what the right answer is, insofar as like, cause he is technically an employee.
What I don't.
Could set the town up to be liable for that tax.
And I don't wanna see that happen.
I think the question is, we, we want to supplement the income somehow of this person to help.
Are we making just this person or anybody?
Anyone similarly situated.
Yeah, which, he's the only one right now.
Well, you have the employee who goes to Lisbon, I just wanna make, I just wanna be.
I was in town just buy a twenty-five dollar gas card every month at the gas, getting go for him every week, or once a month, give him a hundred dollar gas card at the getting go.
But then, yeah, like to Josh's point, what do you do?
But you lose control, is it for commuting purposes, or is it for?
Yeah, yeah, we always have, you always lose some control, we don't have a mileage counter on his car that we know.
Uh, he has to turn in mileage, that is strictly business to us for reimbursement right now.
Always lose control.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, there's always that possibility that it's padded, but at least we're conforming to the fact that we're consistent to any employee. Who uses their vehicle during this period of time, instead of the, the IRS rate, we will supplement that with an additional amount. You are subject to reporting that to your tax accountant going forward.
Or let's just make a new reimbursement rate, and then obviously, he's, either way, he's, it's an income for him anyways.
Well.
He can write off the fifty-eight, now that I think about it, it's, it's six and one half dozen of the other.
But the fifty-eight is you, isn't usually taxable though, you don't receive that.
How would you like to proceed is probably the.
Yeah, because he's gonna write off his business mileage at the end of the year.
If I was in his position, I had, and I was able to do, I had receipts for everything, gas receipts, I had the age of the vehicle. Oil filter, all of that is allowable for the course of that.
My, my point is, but.
Now we're getting, that's why I think it's just simple to do a cost of living allowance based off the economic conditions that we're in right now. And whatever, I don't care what you guys deem it fair, but just go with it.
Yeah, but, but what we pay out, we won't tax, is what my point is.
Yeah, he will get it under a payable.
Yeah, see, but I don't think you can go and not tax them for that difference. You see, we can pay him the fifty-eight and a half cents per mile, not taxed as an expense, but if we do something larger. We gotta tax them on the difference, then he can write it off and get that money back at the end of the year, not the other way around. Then the towns are liable for the difference.
He has no write-off if you're paying the mileage for, from the town standpoint, but if you pay above.
But if you pay above the IRS rate, but you, you gotta tax that extra amount, no difference than the.
That's what I'm getting at, either way, he's getting taxed, that's what I'm saying, just do a col- a cost of living allowance, or whatever that might be, from, from a weekly standpoint.
Cause what, certainly from a tracking process, it's probably going to be easier, both in tal- both in communicating what his tax. Liability is.
Yeah.
If that extra money is income versus extra mileage reimbursement, right? Cause can you imagine, I mean, how are we even gonna report to him that we paid out X amount of mileage in excess of the fifty-eight. Whatever cents a mile, I don't, I mean, I.
It's like, well, just, it's, what are you doing, is giving him a bonus, and then it shows up as a bonus with a fifty percent.
Yeah, whatever label you wanna put on it, I think you, you put a, uh.
And then that's the difference, and then.
Well, it's not a bonus, uh, uh, I mean, the reason why it's a cost of living allowance, because it's based off of a set number, and then we're gonna retract it once that number's.
So, alright, so what did we figure, what, when we, I mean, I think we kinda need to get a sense of, okay, how many miles a week? Is he doing it, is he driving, right, and then what, what, what do we think the, um, how much more of an expense is that?
Yeah, it might be.
And then.
Value then.
And then we can, then we can talk about is, do we then set the stipend at a level? So that once the withholding is deducted, he's coming out whole in terms of what is out of pocket, it's like, for instance. When L L Bean wants to give their employees a hundred dollar bonus for a Christmas gift.
Yeah.
It's, they, they, the check is really for a hundred and sixty-five dollars, right? Right, and, but so that you net a hundred. So I think we want him to net whatever we think an appropriate amount of money.
Right.
In addition.
That works.
Due to the higher gas.
I just don't know how you account for it in, in the municipal system, I know how you can do this from a business end, I don't know how you do it, so I would, I would, this is one of those things, I would either A, ask MMA. What everybody's doing, cause I know we're not the only town in this situation, or maybe call a couple other town managers and ask them. Cause I don't know on the, the dynamics between the municipality and.
But I'm, I'm definitely hearing that the board supports the concept of making sure that somebody's not losing money, well, because. But I'm definitely hearing that the board supports the concept of making sure that somebody's not losing money while because doing their job. Right, and and I think we want it, but we want it to work for him and us in a way that doesn't violate IRS regulations.
Right, we don't wanna, yeah, we wanna make everybody come right, that's looking good.
And and I think I think, you know, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think we're. We're open to making whatever we decide to do, we can make it retroactive to a certain date or something, because it might take us a little while to stammer through this. Um but until we land on something, um and say, yeah, we'll make it retroactive to, you know, Christ when he started. Because that's when they were already up, you know, so go back to his date of employment and we'll we'll adjust it. So that at least that way he knows that if it takes us a while to figure this out, you know, if it takes us another month to figure this out, then we're gonna we're gonna make a hole.
He's not losing money in the.
I wish I could have been more definitive to to the suggestion, but these are unique times.
Yeah, but you're gonna you're gonna determine not only how much, but the best way to do it.
Correct.
Talk to MMA, yeah.
And yeah, I will get hold of MMA and and see what they're recommending and it may be something that others have already contemplated.
Right, that's the thing, yeah.
I would guess, I don't think we're the only one in this.
As I was saying to the chair earlier, the the inflation factor is eight point five percent, that's the the loss of the buying power. When you take fifty eight point five cents times one point zero eight five, I think it came out to seventy five or eighty cents.
I I hear, I I that's rational, but gas inflation is way more than eight and a half percent.
So if you take one point two five percent, you're taking basically twenty twenty nine, you're almost taking fifteen cents. There and it's still in the seventy five to eighty cent range, because it consists of three components for depreciation, operation and so on. And replacement.
Alright.
I will report back.
And and I would I would, you know, now that we we know that the board is on on board, I would I would include him in the conversation. And make sure that he's that that he thinks whatever we come up or whatever you wanna propose, that you're in agreement that, yeah, we both think this is fair. Here's what we're proposing.
Okay, yeah, the town clerk also.
Because we don't wanna go through all that, come up with a number and go back and say, yeah, that ain't gonna get it.
The two front office people are running to the post office, to the bank constantly.
Yeah, there's no reason that.
And it could be the same thing there, you know, like if it's if, you know, if it's.
It should be the same.
You know, well, it uh it's gonna it's gotta be proportional to the mileage, right, so.
Oh, gee, sure.
Yeah, 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 so.
Well, that's the thing.
They call it a rational nexus.
Yeah, right.
It'd be quite a bit less.
Alright, so where are we now, is that, that get us through your stuff?
Hopefully. Think that's pretty much everything. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. Alright, so I'm gonna move on to public comment, are you here for public comment? You are a patient man. Please call, oh, good, right. We've got a couple of openings on various committees. Yeah, please introduce yourself, like your name and the street you live on and.
Sure, sure, my name is Nathan Ledger, I live on Brianna Drive, right down the road here. I'm getting ahead of the agenda by one line item, but I figured I'd use this to kinda introduce myself. I've just been inducted as the finance officer for the Ambets Post thirteen.
Ah, okay.
I'm a former coastie, I was in the Coast Guard for about nine and a half years, I did federal law enforcement, I did search and rescue and all that other good stuff. Well, once I left there, I met a girl and uh I went to the Maine Police Academy, I was a police officer in Freeport for four and a half years. And now I reside in this great town of Durham and my heart just bleeds for veterans, so. When they uh were approached by the national uh Ambets to kind of get their act together. I kinda jumped on board and 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 I'm helping with that whole process, trying to get us up to speed with our paperwork and and doing all that, so. I'm here to answer any questions or dispel any myths or uh talk about or whatever, or I can leave, I I.
Nope, so if that if you sit tight, I uh I'm gonna look for if there's um is there any objection to uh taking agenda itis. I item seven out of order and talking about Ambets since we since we have, I'm sorry, was it Nate? Okay, uh is here, okay, so we're gonna do, we're we're working on uh seven and um so there's two things here. I'm gonna I'm gonna hold off on A for a second, uh B, uh there's an application for barbecue competition and Brew Fest, they've done that. Three or four times, it's actually a pretty fun event and the food is really good, so I highly recommend it if you're around. The game of chance thing, that was the one I asked to be pulled out of the consent agenda, because I wasn't really sure what that was and what the license would. Um open up over there, uh and I was also, I know it it, because that one is for. Um I had a chance to talk to one of the Ambet members today, I called and said, you know, so what's the deal with this, you know, and um he gave me a lot of good information. Uh this would be an ongoing thing, not it's not just a single event and so. One of the questions I had, and I I have not had a chance to read this application, but perhaps you know the answer is, I know when we're issuing a liquor license. Or a liquor application like we did for them, we had to have a public hearing for that. And so I don't know if we're required to have a public hearing for this, so.
Games of chance, if I remember right, and and I remember you could serve me wrong, that when Sparky used to go over on the schoolyard here. We had to stop that one year at the end of the year because um Oxford Casinos inquired. And said that we couldn't hold the gam- game of chance due to the ongoing uh regulations surrounding.
It was because they didn't have a license, that that's what this is, is the application for a license.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you, uh not only do I need a uh application for the license just to hold that. But then I also need to apply for what particular game of chance I wanna play.
To the at the state level.
Before I get to the state level, I need to speak to you to to you.
So your license at the state level is contingent upon us granting the license for.
That's correct. Liquor works the same way.
Right, 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 so it's kind of out of our hands.
This, well, the select board needs to know what's going on in their town.
No, because we could, we could say, no, we don't allow game of chance licenses in this town, I mean, we could do that.
So what is it that you?
So the, so there's multiple games of chance, uh everyone's been to a fair, you've seen pull tabs, that's your most typical game of chance, where you spend it. An amount, you open it and there's a chance that you might win. We're we're not doing this, what we're gonna play is Queen of Hearts and generally speaking, uh we're gonna start selling tickets on Sunday at noon. Until Saturday at eight P M, all week long, uh you have the opportunity to purchase a ticket. Um and I'll backtrack just, you have the opportunity to purchase a ticket all week long, your ticket goes into a big tumbler. On Saturday, we draw that name, if you were to win, there's various prizes, you would win automatically, like a you won automatically. But then you get to pick a card on the board and we take fifty two cards, a standard playing deck, and we add two jokers to it. So there's fifty four total cards, the game's called Queen of Hearts specifically because you wanna find the queen of hearts. If you find the queen of hearts, you get jackpot, sixty percent of the jackpot, there's a breakdown in the application uh that I had to provide to the state. Uh our rule, we had to come up with a set of rules, we had to come up with our prizes, we had to come up with all kinds of stuff, I personally will run the game. Which because of that, the state requires myself to be to abstain from the game whatsoever, I can never play, my family members can never play, my wife can never play.
Your wife okay with that?
I'm totally fine with that, uh I wanna backtrack just real quick, because when I say you could purchase a ticket, the Veterans Club is still going to be the Ambets Veterans Club. You still have to be a member, you still have to be uh as a guest of a member who has is required to be there. So it's not like the whole town can just go and start gambling at the Ambets Post, uh you still have to be, you know, a veteran to be in or a son. Or a part of the auxiliary or part of or a member of their guest. Once you purchase that ticket, at the end of the week, say you flip over like the two of clubs, well, all the money stays in the pot. All the tickets go in the trash, and the very next day, Sunday at noon, we re- we we reopen the selling of the tickets. And so. So the pot goes and goes and goes until someone finds the queen of hearts, however, it's gonna fluctuate. If you win automatically, you win twenty five bucks right off the bat just for me pulling a ticket. Congratulations, uh if you pull one of the jokers, if the pot is a certain amount, you'll win a certain amount based on what the joker is valued at. Based on how much money I have, uh the state requires me to open up a separate checking account, uh it has to be. Uh the money can be spent on various items, nothing to do with the bar at all, I can upkeep the building, which mainly is what we're trying to do. As a nonprofit, there's a lot of work that needs to be done over there, um and we're trying to do all kinds of things. I wanna see the scholarships that we offer increase, I wanna see the building, most of the building repairs and and rehab that needs to be done over there increase. Um I wanna start helping veterans building homes or rehabbing homes or doing whatever. And so one of the avenues to raise money along with the barbecue, stuff like that, if you go into any American Legion or veterans or whatever else. They have these called games of chance.
Yeah, so eh yeah, so I was, I had quest like questions I was asking earlier when I was speaking to a another member was like, does this? Like, does this open the door to like, you know, video poker and off track betting and all and it and it does it, that would be an entirely separate application, a different process, a whole. This is, it's pretty clear on the application, it's just for that one.
Correct, and every, so for every game, so so this is just for the Queen of Hearts game that I just explained. Say it's going really well and the and the post says, uh let's do uh pull tabs, I have to go through this entire process all over again for pull tabs. And each pull tab game, so you can have a machine that holds two games at the same exact time, each one of those games is required to be permitted. And each one of those games is a sixty dollar a month fee for each game.
Oh, state's gotta get there.
So I've been in, I've been in direct contact with James Gass, who's at the gaming control board over at the state, him and I have been emailing each other back and forth. And so, yeah, so for e- every game that I do or or anticipate doing, I'll have to be before you again.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright.
Just looking at this, although they quote the uh statute, nowhere on the application does it say the date, time and location of a public hearing. For this license.
Yeah, I didn't see it either, I went through it and I didn't see it either, that's what I was looking for, going page by page.
I I didn't see it then, I don't see it now.
If we ever hold a cribbage tournament, that's a new application, hold the same process, if I ever hold a poker tournament.
And that's like a one, but that's awful, like an event thing, right, or unless you were gonna have like every Thursday night with poker night or whatever.
For however I pay for the license, they off they offer.
Oh, I got you.
Offer everything from a monthly fee to I could pay for the whole year. For seven hundred bucks to get the license for the whole year, and then every game that I play, I'll have to apply for those particular games each time. Which I can, well, things change, but I can tell you right now, we don't have any, put, I don't, I'm like, I live my life by monopoly, one little greenhouse. Two little green, before you get the red hotel, you gotta concentrate on one little greenhouse. So as of right now, we have no other plans, no other talk, no other ambition to do anything but this one Queen of Hearts game.
According to this, I don't think it's the intent to have any public hearing, because it says the completed form and payment must be in the office. State level, fifteen days, no greater than fifteen days before the event is held, that doesn't really give anyone any time to. Go to the elected officials and then go to a newspaper, even if you did simultaneous, so I said, unless I find otherwise. And I'll, I can double check, um you are probably free to approve exactly what has been said here. And then it becomes a state responsibility to give you final approval.
Correct, I I just think it's oversight, I just think the state says, well, we want each town to know what's going on in their town.
Yep, alright, any further questions or comment, alright, I would entertain a motion uh to approve the applications. For the Ambets uh for their game of chance and for the barbecue competition in Brew Fest. So moved by Joe, is there a second, Josh, any further discussion, all in favor? Five oh, alright, great, thank you for coming in, that is very helpful to have, I don't know if you were planning on coming in tonight or if you if you got a heads up from from. From the person I spoke to or what.
We're all in good contact with the.
Yeah, yeah, so but I'm glad it was very helpful. And I think in the future, uh it would be just good, like as especially if it's something we haven't seen before, to just send someone to answer questions.
And I'm glad I came, can I go back to the public comment kinda thing?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I'm a rookie, and when I say rookie, that's a complete understatement, but a rookie uh real estate investor, after leaving the police force, I had to do something, so. Uh the A D U topic that was coming up before, the accessory dwelling unit, I just wanna tell you that, I don't know if, there's stuff on the internet that I've been reading. That pertains to the town of Durham that supposedly already has rules and policies and regulations already written up for it.
State supersedes local.
Yeah, but and the way I wrote it was the state changed the law so that anybody can do it, but each town has to come up with their zone, has to adopt it. And come up with their own zoning requirements.
That would be standard.
So and I think like John was referring to earlier, we already allow accessory apartments, but there's some other. You know, there's, this has expanded that a bit beyond what our current ordinance is, and so we have to figure out things like. Well, if you actually build a second structure, what do we require in terms of like, well, receptive testing or whatever, so that's what he's talking about, so.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Wait a second, they'll have them sign it, that way you won't have to wait.
You're signing both?
Oh, yeah, sign them both, I don't think.
Please.
When you just, I haven't signed that one yet, and there's actually two applications.
Firehouse, you talk to the fire chief about what you can offer.
You gotta get recruited everywhere. There's two applications in that one, did we sign that one twice, there's one was for the license and one was for the uh, one was. To register the game, yeah, maybe, maybe we only sign the license.
That was the two things, I have to get a license.
Yeah.
And then each game has it needs its own.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if there's two places for us to.
The one.
That makes sense, we're just, yeah, we're just doing the license.
The state says there should have been this or should have been that, let me know right away. And we will come back, we meet the second, the fourth Tuesday of the month and we will have to modify that, but it may blow your schedule.
Well, no, because we're we're here Thursday and next Thursday, so.
I believe somewhere on there I read that it takes the state about thirty days to even do what we just did here. So, and before I even kick it off, it'll be, so one's for the game and one's for the.
Barbecue.
Barbecue and Brew Fest.
Which typically would be under the consent agenda.
It was, I I pulled it out because I had the game of chance on it, because I just wanted, I wanted to talk about it and that's.
It's like a big raffle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, the the winner, when I say the winner gets the pot. Sorry, Devin, I just waxed my mic.
So the the barbecue, anybody can enter that?
Anybody, uh there's tickets all over the place.
Oh, they're always looking for, uh you are you a barbecue?
You gotta bring your own, you've gotta bring your own setup, do your own thing, yeah. But there's competitions, there's judges and there's trophies and there's.
Yeah, I went to the first one and I think I was out of town. Well, no, that was a different thing they did, they did, uh that that was pretty good, the driver, you know, order it at a time. Curbside barbecue with the Ambets, yeah.
So every weekend around my birthday, my wife makes plans.
This one looks like there's nothing else for us to sign on this one.
Yeah, make sure we caught everything.
We've, I think we had that app about three, four years ago, we forgot something, somebody had to drive all the way back from Augusta.
That was Ambets.
Yeah, I didn't leave my resume for any bad blood, I met a girl to leave the Coast Guard and I had three kids, I had. Municipalities don't pay all that. I was basically providing uh my daycare, my check, and I said, well.
Yeah, I hear you.
Went home to take care of my kids.
Looks like this one is.
Good?
Good to go.
Awesome, well, I appreciate your time.
Alright, you bet, thanks, good luck.
There you go, sir.
Take care, thank you.
And if you ever wanna get into public official positions, the board is always looking to help you.
I'll have to run that by my boss.
Good luck.
Alright, so we're now we're back to number six.
And you have something in writing.
Discussion correspondence from the Durham Historic District Commission, so what I wa- I'm, I don't know how far you guys got last time, I don't know. Last time, I don't know, is there anything to discuss?
We kinda tabled it, um, you know, they were going into some things in regards to. Buildings and appeals boards and stuff, and I, I didn't think this was.
The gist of it, yeah, ju- I mean, the way George has explained it to me, basically, the. The Historic District Commission is basically recommending that the historic district ordinance be repealed. That, and that they focus more on property, eh, individual properties versus a district. And so I don't know how this is all, like, coming together, what they're proposing, but, you know. The, the one thing, and I think I've said this to George, but I just wanna make sure that we're not, um.
Overstepping?
Overstepping, right, making, cause like, for instance, they talk about ten properties, and like, I think s- a, a s- a small number of them are. Already identified as historic places, and some are just eligible.
Right.
But if I own a property and it's eligible, but I don't really care, and I don't, I don't necessarily want to. Subject my property to those restrictions, so that's the interest of the individual property owner is what I'm concerned about. As, as that gets drafted.
And it's not just you, it's your butters.
Well, that too, right?
Immediate butters.
Yeah, so. So I think there's, and, and again, much like the planning board discussion earlier, I mean, we're, we're not, I think we. We can certainly let our, you know, we can. I don't wanna say influence the process, but let our feelings be known, because ultimately, articles don't get on the warrant unless we put them on the warrant. Right, so, um, I think that's, it's just, I think. That needs to be part of the process, I think, in terms of that balance between historic preservation and, and individual property. Owner rights, but.
So it sounds like they had an idea that they wanted to.
Yeah.
Do something.
And I think we don't, we need to have something concrete to react to, right, and we don't have that, yeah.
They come up with the idea and say, okay, replace this with this other thing, then that's something we.
I, I, and I think, I, yeah, exactly, and I think, you know, I think dissolving the, the historic district makes sense because I think. It was kinda silly in the first place. Right, yeah, but, um.
But the, the.
Sir, I didn't think it was a topic for really us, I thought they had more work to do on their end, and.
But it goes back to an ordinance that was adopted by the town.
It does.
It says that any building, and there's a certain level of categories, that is a hundred years of age or older. You cannot tear down, so then the question becomes, is there overreach on the part of a municipality? To go onto private property and it's a butters, and effectively say, you cannot do this and you have to preserve it. Why should I spend two hundred thousand dollars on a hundred thousand dollar building that has no use in function? I'm being the, the devil's advocate here, so I think there's a lot more to this than meets the eye.
Yep.
And it also comes to a bigger plan, if you were to ask Calvin what his vision of Royalsboro Road is. From maybe up as far as the AMVets all the way down through to Get and Go, he would suggest to you. You need to have sidewalks to make it more of the downtown.
Right.
Secondly, historic districts are configured with a butters' properties in mind. And they're usually at one location, here it's, let's just save every old building.
Right.
And I'm not saying that that shouldn't happen, but you have to at some point say, I'm sorry that you bought that sixteen acres of farmland. That had the old town hall on it that we no longer use, but what are we using it for, or are we just gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars to watch it deteriorate?
Yeah.
So we need to ask ourselves, what is it that we wanna be as a town? Do we wanna define downtown, do we wanna define historic district, or do we wanna narrow the focus? That says, we have a historic society and commission that says, here are the eligible elements. For you to f- f- fill out and determine whether or not that's a historic building or not.
So, yeah, so, eh, you know, um, it's really not a matter for our discussion tonight, there's really nothing that we're gonna.
Gets you started.
Yep.
I think it needs to be started in another court. And I don't mean court as in, uh, as an authoritative as far as, uh, law or anything, I'm talking as far as like a basketball.
Would, right.
Planning board, uh.
Would you recommend that the planning board, the planner, code enforcement officer, fire chief, historic. Preservation interested parties all get together and make a recommendation to you after they thoroughly vet.
Well, well, I think, I think that's kind of the, i- it's not a matter of a recommendation to us because we're not. We're not the deciding body, only thing we decide is whether to put an ordinance on the warrant or not when it comes to this, but, and I think. That was one of the four things, I think, that John mentioned, uh, earlier, and so I think, um. I think it's one, though, that, eh, the one thing I would, you know, and make sure that, eh, George, you know, gets good direction on is that. His role is not just to craft what the historic district commission wants to see. I think there's a larger public input process here in terms of what is the role of historic. Preservation or, and or a district or whatever, like, does the town really support? Those types of, uh, constraints on individual property owners, uh, or not, you know, and it, 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 so his job is not to just. Codify an ordinance what the historic district commission is advocating for, so.
Do, and, and I would agree with you, because our planner has already used some of those same terms.
Yeah.
And is that the right venue for them to vet this properly? And do you as a board want to simply have a letter created that repeats what you've just said? And when they are ready to, with some kind of final draft, then make a presentation to you. That may in fact request it go before a town meeting for.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be reasonable, yep, as part of their work on that.
Be in touch when you get back from vacation, so think of those good words.
All right. My good words are, it's my house, leave me alone.
Yeah. And my butters, you're my butters.
Oh, yeah, mine's, I'm not saying another word. Let me tell you about my house, no, let me not tell you about. Um, okay. Um, all right, so we're done with number six, then we're skipping to over, to number eight. So, uh, one of the things, uh, we all know is that we, one of the or- uh, requested ordinance changes that did pass was. Pulling the, um, all the various land use fees out of the ordinances. So that we could adjust them over the years as things change without requiring an actual ordinance. Change process, but, and so the ordinances on, on our website now have removed all those fees. But we, we didn't also put up what the fees are for people to represent. A week or two ago, that kinda blew up in, in a, in a misunderstanding about something, so what we're proposing tonight is. There are no changes to existing fees here, cor- correct, this is just what was in the ordinance prior to the change.
Just stated.
Publishing them on the website and here at the town office so that people know what they are. This, this doesn't preclude us from, and I think George is doing some work on this, uh. When he comes back with kind of like what we said we would do, like, well, let's kinda comp these against.
Right.
Other similar towns and what's out there, and, and talk about, do we need to make any adjustments? Uh, we, we can still do that this year, but this is just posting what the current fees are.
And that is adopted and in effect until such time is changed.
Right, and they haven't been changed, right, this is just what they are.
Make sure that what we've been charging all along continues to be charged until you make, till the town meeting makes any changes to the.
And I do think, though, and, and, you know, the, and you, I can see you've got a handwritten note in here, like, where we see things. Uh, like, eh, I'll just use Board of Appeals, as that was the issue that came up, you know. Eh, eh, the application is, you know, seventy dollars plus advertising costs, and like, well, what does that mean? You know, eh, cause it also includes notifying a butters and the, and the mailing expense with that, and so we should be. In our next iteration, be more specific about what those costs are, not specifically the dollar figure, but what. What, what are they paying for?
Take the words out and just make it a whole number, don't even.
Oh, you can't make a whole number for first, for publishing that.
I know.
Cause you have a, well, cause you have a variable number, number of butters too, right, so.
The, the, the interpretation of the word advertisement is what's at the crux of this discussion. And in, in common practice, advertisement is the legal notice of something going forward. The notification to a butters has been more recently understood because you're talking seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Per each, and that should not be on the taxpayers, that should be on the applicants responsible.
Yeah.
So, that's why I stuck in here.
And I'm saying, I don't disagree with that, I just think we should be clear in the language of it, that, that.
So that if you adopt this as.
Seventy plus notification of a butters.
With advertising and a butter notification.
Right, that's what I was, that's all I'm saying, I'm not talking about a big, long, you know, paragraph or whatever, but.
Now, these, these planning board fees are already in the.
Mm-hmm, this is what came out of the ordinance before, this is what was in the ordinance, this is what was in the ordinance prior.
You've been charging that for the last several months.
Right.
Several months, okay.
Well, more than that, several years, so.
But it was in the ordinance, now it's.
And maybe, maybe some were missed, Todd, like, if you're, if you're seeing something, say, well, I never paid that, or, you know, or.
Well, these escrows, these escrows are new.
The escrows did get updated in twenty nineteen, so that, that is fairly recent. But that, this is what was in the ordinance as of town meeting this past April, okay?
This is our most current fee schedule.
Yes.
I just wanna make it plain.
Yes, yes.
I just wanna make it plain.
We just, yeah, we just want, we're just looking to be transparent about what the, uh.
So what are we looking for, for a motion?
I don't even know if we need a motion, but I, let's, I would take, I would, yeah, I'll ask for, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, post the, um. To a, eh, adopt and post the current land use ordinance, uh, fee schedule as, as presented.
Adopt, sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right, post, yeah, all right, let me amend that.
Affirm.
Eh, I like that, nice.
Adopt means we're changing.
Yeah, 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 no, that's a good call, that's a good call, so I'm, I, I, I'd move that we affirm and post the current land use. Uh, fee schedule, um, as presented.
Until amended by the board.
Well, I don't think we need to put that, that's true of everything, right, it's, this is what it is until it's amended by the board.
Don't second, I agree with your language where it says, affirm and post. The existing schedule to include clarification for a butter for notifications on appeals as the fee schedule.
I guess, there's a motion on the table, I said we do second.
But it wasn't second, however, but I wanna make sure it's stuck in.
Well, sorry, I'll, I'll amend my motion to affirm and post the fee schedule, uh, uh. Listing the current fees from our land use with the addition of the explanation that advertising costs. Uh, are for legal notices and a butter notifications. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, so is there, I would entertain that motion.
Second.
Well, no, somebody needs to make it.
I'll make it.
Go ahead, so, eh, do we have, has somebody made the motion?
Yes.
All right, Josh made the motion, Rich second, okay, now discussion.
Uh, Mitch, when we were talking about before, I thought you said something about adding language about amending. Did I miss unders- miss here or misunderstand?
That, that's why I mentioned it earlier, a, a second ago, I thought, I thought you mentioned something about that. I, I could be wrong.
I'm trying to think back because I know we're reaffirming that this is in place now, and it's in place until it's gone before. The normal process of amending or changing.
Right, and I think may, you know, and maybe what you're trying to get at is that, cause the way the. The way the article was on the warrant was that we basically get one bite at the apple a year to make changes to the fee schedule, like we. We, um, you know, can add, eh, then, like, it's supposed to post it, you know, annually or whatever, so like, this will be good for the next, you know, whatever. Year, but we're not making any changes, so I think we're just, um.
Adopting and clarifying.
A- affirming and posting, yes. Okay, are you good with that?
I thought I heard something and that's, I just wanted to.
Adopting.
Yeah, well, that's not in the motion.
It's affirming, you're affirming this schedule and clarifying the issue of the abutter notice.
Yep, yeah, that's, that's the motion.
With that, I just, as, as long as there's nothing else, I thought there was.
Okay, no, it's good, it's good to ask and make sure, so, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, so let's get that up. Okay, um, all right, number nine, recommendation to apply for a tax anticipation note not to exceed one point five million. To be repaid by December thirty first, twenty twenty-two, and I think this is not unusual, this has been kinda standard operation. Because the, the way I always put this to people, and eh, eh, there's oftentimes a light bulb goes off, so it's, yeah, that's probably not a good way to do business. So, we approve a budget in April that goes back to January that we don't collect any revenue for until July or August.
And that's assuming normal inflation.
Yeah, right, well, whatever, I mean, that's, that, those are the, that's when we do it, so, at some point, you know, we've talked about the. We need to, like, rip the Band-Aid off and move to a fiscal year, but, um, we're, uh, not happening this year, so.
Are we, are we certain that we're gonna need a tan already?
Yes, in the memo that I left at each of your locations, I did some math, our school is four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars a month right off the bat. We spend an average of five hundred and twenty, six hundred thousand dollars, which includes school payment, which means our payroll and our payables. So if you do the numbers really quickly, we're approaching seven hundred thousand dollars of expenses. And right now we have one point five million dollars as of today before, before you sign those. Once those are signed, that depletes it down, we have approximately another two weeks, maybe three weeks. Of operating cash before we run out, and I certainly don't wanna wait to the last minute. I wanna contact Anderson Skoggin, I wanna contact the other banks that we deal with, have them make proposals. And I wanna make sure that Jack is brought into it so that we are ready with the line of credit as needed. It has to be paid back by December thirty first.
Yeah, we've always, because once, once tax payments start coming in, it's, it, it gets paid off, and so. It's always been a pretty, a pretty minor expense, really.
It's almost about an SOP for the last.
It has been.
And if you go ahead and if you wanna talk about changing to a fiscal year.
Not tonight.
No, please. Oh, I'm just getting primed.
Let me get my, let me get my PowerPoint.
Hopefully simplified, it's eighteen months or, or a six-month fiscal year, and then an eight, and then a regular twelve, so you can do it either way.
Yep, okay, so, um, I would entertain a motion to approve. A tax anticipation note not to exceed one point five million dollars to be repaid by December thirty first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Josh moves.
I'll second.
I, I heard Todd first, Todd seconds. But the record show Todd moved to spend.
Todd?
Todd, all right, any discussion? All in favor? We have five zero, okay, uh, entertain a motion, eh, we did pull, remember, we pulled A out of the consent agenda. Because we don't have those minutes. Um, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with item A removed.
Um, and then on item C, I was under the impression we granted that last week on Paul.
Last week, I thought you guys did.
My memory failed, di- I, cause I said, I didn't think we did.
I wasn't here.
I wasn't either.
I thought we did, remember, cause we asked.
All right, so we're gonna, so we'll move, we'll, we'll move C, cause we've already done that, I thought, I, I thought we'd already done that too.
My mistake.
It's all right.
Well, it's okay.
Um, okay, so now we entertain a motion to approve item B from the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Josh. Todd's second, ha, all in favor? All right, five oh on that. All right, upcoming meetings, um, the Town Manager Hiring Committee, uh, actually with, with. In conjunction with the full board at the request of the hiring committee, cause I want people to understand that, that, because that is a little bit. Off from the original process that we all, uh, that we came to, but at the request of the committee. The, basically, Rich and I, who are not, the only two board members not part of the committee, were asked to join, uh, for these first two interviews.
So by, by way of explanation, we talked about that and, and, and thought that was the best approach because there's only, we're only having two interviews. And, and if there's a need for a second interview, we could always ask them to come back.
Could still happen, right, yeah.
And, and so we, we thought it was best to have us all there at once.
Yep.
Short the process.
Yeah.
Speed things up.
All right, well, hopefully, hopefully we really like one, or maybe even both of the candidates, so. Okay, uh, so anyway, that committee is, is meeting. Okay, uh, so anyway, that committee is, is meeting, and this is an executive session meeting, there's no public business that night, uh, but it does have to be noticed, so that is um, this Thursday, uh, at six thirty, and then again for another candidate on June thirtieth, uh, at six thirty, um. And any other, uh, and I will, actually, I wanna, uh, upcoming news, the chief mentioned the, uh, trek across Maine, I did wanna mention that again, um, that, and just a reminder that it is state law that when a motorist passes a cyclist, that you need to give them at least three feet.
Yeah.
You know, and I understand that for some people, having, you know, a thousand, twelve hundred cyclists coming up Route Nine down Route one thirty-six might be a little bit of an inconvenience for a day, even though it's gonna happen outside the commuting. Please keep in mind that each of those people riding raised at least five hundred dollars for the American Lung Association, and I think probably all of us in one way or another have had someone impacted by a lung disease, so, um, patience is appreciated. Headlights on that day is even more appreciated, 'cause you, it's, you can see the cars coming a little bit better, so, anyway. Just wanted to put that additional thing out, so that'll be this Friday, um, so be on the lookout for that. Alright, um, we don't need an executive session tonight, right? So we can skip over that. Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Tom, uh, Joe moves, I keep calling you Tom.
I'll second it.
Todd second, all in favor? Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you Devon.
Thank you Devon.
Oh, we gotta sign the warrant, don't leave.
No, don't leave.